Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the seventh meeting of fiscal year 2023. I would like to now call the meeting to order. We can begin by introducing ourselves, the members. We have Sean.
Sean Fahey, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
Maggie.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
And staff, Tim.
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Josh.
Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner.
Julia.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
And myself, Meredith Hall, Chair. Thank you all and welcome.
Meredith, excuse me, we have Rich also.
Oh, he's here, he's on. Oh, Rich?
Yes.
Yes, please introduce yourself.
Rich Filer, member.
Great, thank you, thank you. And just to first begin with administrative items. Our next meeting dates with the planning board will be October 13th and October 27th. And we will also have our joint Planning Board Select Board meeting Tuesday evening at 7:30 PM. So hopefully.
Yeah, Meredith, do you want to talk about in the context of upcoming meetings? Whether we want to do remote or in person for Tuesday?
Yes, actually, we do. We met briefly this morning with just with town council to go over our proper protocol for Tuesday evening. And it was, it was, Arthur and I both thought it might be nice to be in person on Tuesday evening. Meeting with the select board, but we weren't sure if there were folks who would not be able to make it. If it, if it wasn't remote. Would in person be possible for everyone?
I may be, I may be a few minutes late in person.
Okay.
I have a commitment until 7:30.
Okay. Are you, do you have to travel? Far?
Just from my house to town hall wouldn't take me too long unless traffic is good. But I think half a minute and I can try and duck out of the other few minutes early. I'm, I'm just giving a heads up, it just might be.
All right, well, we'll wait, you know, we would wait for any discussion, obviously, for you and then.
What was the date, Meredith?
It's, it's this coming Tuesday, the 27th of September is our joint meeting with the select board.
I, I can be there, Meredith, I'll be.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can be there, what time, it's at 7:30?
7:30 and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance and a call to order, so. It'll, it'll be a few minutes before we're ready to get to our agenda items, so. Okay, well, we'll give that feedback and I'm not sure about the select board, they were going to sort of poll their members as well and they may have some conflict, so. That's great, thank you for being amenable if, if possible, so. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. And we have two, two sets of minutes to approve, we have August 25th and September 8th. Did anyone have any concerns or questions on either of those?
I did do some edits, hopefully everyone saw that and had a chance to review them.
Yes.
Cheryl, I didn't see the edit, did you, did you send edits today, or new edits?
Well, what I, normally what I do is edit the ones that are in the folder and so I, I don't take them out of the folder or circulate them. So I alerted you just because it was late and I, when I did that, so that you could go back and review them. Hopefully you can see that I turn on the track changes if it's not on already when I do that. That they're readily, readily visible. So you could probably, if you go to that now, to that box now, that folder now, Sean, you could see them, they're, they're not very extensive.
Yeah, I, I have not, but I'll try to do that.
All right, should we, we can hold off, my, what I pulled up actually did not have what I, is usually the redlined. Tracker on, on there, but I did read through them and they looked fine to me, but. But we can wait and defer these if we would like to the next meeting.
Just as a heads up, I have found that for me to see the red line, I actually have to download it. I, I just can't see it when I open the document. So you have to download it first to then see the changes, but I'm fine.
I wonder, Maggie, if you, if you will try some, I always go to where it says track changes and. Maybe it doesn't automatically keep it to show them, you know, you might need to click on that to show it.
Okay.
It, it would, sometimes I've had to download and make the changes and resubmit them, but it just seems easier if they can be the same one that stay in the box. Rather than having to do that, if we can find a way to make that work.
I've, I've had to download them too, so if it would make things easier, I could, I'd be the one to download them and then send them out individually.
Julia, I know that would actually help me, it would have, help, help me, you know, expedite any comment response.
Yeah, the folder is kind of wonky with the tracking changes.
That'd be great, Julia, thank you.
Actually, the other thing is I found that I need to be logged into the account. So if you're not logged into the account, that might make a difference still. Which would just be your town of Milton email address and then whatever password you set up for that. That gets you into the folder as well, whatever you set up for your email.
Great, so would we like to make a motion or would we like to defer?
I'd like to defer.
Great, let's, let's do that, that's absolutely fine, so. Let's defer the minutes from September 8th and August 25th. To, for, to vote on, on October 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, and Tim, staff update. Oh, Rich, sorry, you have your hand up?
Yeah, no, just before we get past that, I was working my calendar, so I don't know if we were talked about the, the dates coming up. The next meeting, I actually can't make the 13th. I'll be, I wouldn't be able to make any part of that meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. For letting us know. But you're good for the 27th, would you like for us to try to move that meeting, Rich?
The problem is I'm at a work function, it's all week and it's in California, so the time for it, screw me up.
It's not an easy week for me.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. Good, and we don't have the agenda, but I, I'll, you know. All right, then let's keep that, I think we should keep the 13th then.
Yeah, if there's anything, I can watch the video.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, if, just one thing I'll mention, if, and I don't know that this would come up that quickly. But when we have something which will be a special permit or site plan approval, where you can only miss one meeting. You know, it would be good to keep, to bear that in mind, if, if that's.
Absolutely, yeah, I don't think there's anything that we're going to be, you know, the design guidelines, I think we're going to approve this evening, but so I, I don't. So I don't think we need to defer that, but we'll get there and if there is anything that we're voting on, it's. Rich will definitely make sure you're, you're there, thank you. Okay, staff update.
Thanks a lot, and, and just to kind of piggyback on that, we, we don't have any applications in right now. I think the 13th is three weeks away. So I mean, even if we did, we've got a little bit of leeway in, in the timelines to. You know, if, if we need to hold a public hearing or something, we can, we can do that at a future meeting. But I'm, I'm actually not anticipating anything coming in. Just a couple, just a couple really quick things on, on staff update. I unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the last meeting, I had a conflicting meeting going on. But I, I, I think that you talked a little bit about pursuing the 40B land count project, am I mistaken there?
I did introduce that, that you were, that we were able to fund that.
Yeah, so with, 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 with the board's permission, I'd like to kind of, you know, Denny, about a year and a half ago. Did a little bit of legwork in terms of engaging with some engineering firms to get us some quotes. I'd like to reengage with the firms and kind of update those quotes and bring them back to you. This is something that I think, you know, we do a little bit of a 40B update. You know, while we're talking here, you know, a lot of these projects are kind of in the home stretch and. You know, if everything that's in the pipeline is built the way it's in the pipeline, which is obviously not something that necessarily. Will, will happen in reality, but if it does, we're actually tantalizingly close to safe harbor from a unit perspective. I've been tracking, you know, both 40B projects and other projects that we have going on, producing affordable units and really. Accounting for all of those, we're 25 units away from safe harbor. Which if you think about Winter Valley, which is going to be coming before us with the site plan approval in the near future. And if you think about, you know, a potential, you know, affordable project on land up at the town farm. You know, we can, we have a plausible path to safe harbor at 10%. All of that being said, you know, we're, we've been, we've been approving a lot of affordable housing and that means that if that stuff gets built. Then we'll have, you know, more land with housing on it and I think, you know, the, 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 the theory that we've been working behind this project. And, you know, it's good to have management fiction and it's good to know where you stand on both measures and so. I'd like to reengage with the firms we engage with and if the planning board decides that it's something that they want to put a little bit of budget behind. We can do that, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. The, the one and a half percent count is a little more durable. Than the unit count, especially if you're kind of on the 10% threshold. You know, if you start to build a little bit more housing, your denominator moves, if units come off the inventory for whatever reason, your, your numerator moves. You know, we're, we're not, the land doesn't go away for, in, in most cases. I'm gonna, you know, and unless there's a strong objection, I'm going to reengage with those firms and hopefully bring some proposals back to the board. And you can discuss it, maybe speak about whether you want to put some budget or resources behind that. Any questions before I pass it off to Josh?
I, I have a question, Tim, if I could, ju- just for the, of the residents that are watching tonight and our members. Would you mind just giving, just list the, those particular projects that could get us within 25 units of safe harbor?
Okay, so we are, we are currently at, with, with units that exist in the real world. We are at around 5%. When you approve a comprehensive permit, you automatically, as soon as the permit is filed with the town clerk, you get credit for those units on your inventory. So the units that were moved at Ice House and at Blue Hill Ave. At Canton Ave and in East Milton are on our inventory today. That puts us at around 700 something of the 946 that we need. So the remaining 40B projects that are under review, 16 Amor Road, 936 Brush Hill Road, 728 Randolph Ave. Again, if and when those of those projects happen, we will get credit for those on our inventory. Now, again, the rub with comprehensive permits is those units come off your inventory if you don't issue a building permit within 12 months. So there's going to be some fluctuation in our inventory over the next few years. Again, you know, maybe some of these projects get held up in appeal for significant amounts of time. Maybe they get out of appeal and they take, you know, a little bit more time getting building permits, not getting some permits, so there's going to be fluctuation. The other, the other thing to find is 711 Randolph Ave is happening. They are going to be applying for building permits, that project is going to be built. And then there are other, I don't have any other 40Bs in the pipeline, but there are a handful of units coming out of the Hendrys project. There are a handful of units still to come out of the Walcott Woods project. So those are, those are units that are kind of in the pipeline, not related to the current 40B project that's under review right now. And then the other kind of prospective projects are, you know, again, we passed zoning to. Allow Winter Valley to construct 36 more units on their site at Canton Ave. And then the select board, you know, in their role as the governor's stow and trustees are interested in a portable project that would, that would produce a certain number of units at the town farm site, so. You know, everything that's in the pipeline would get us to within 25 units of 10%. You know, real world conditions, that's going to fluctuate, but, but the pathway is there. And, you know, the thinking being that, you know, if a certain number of those projects do come to fruition. We want to see how that affects our, our land count and, and for folks who call, that may not be familiar, there are two paths to perfect safe harbor. One is 10% of your, your own housing units are on subsized housing inventory. The other is one and a half percent of your developable land is dedicated to affordable housing. And, you know, whichever line you cross first is the safe harbor you get. So, you know, with, with all of the affordable projects that are kind of in the discourse and have a feasible chance of happening. We want to know what our land count looks like, or I think, I think we didn't.
Thank you, Tim. Cheryl, you had your hand up, but did you put it down for?
I, I did put it down because you answered the question I was going to ask, which had to do with 711 Randolph Ave, thanks.
So the, the one last thing that we want to do in staff update is. Josh and Mira Patel from the Engineering Department, she's our environmental coordinator. Recently briefed the select board on some climate change related planning work that our departments have been working on. And Josh is going to give the, the super, super duper stripped down. Just to give the idea, kind of stuff that we're working on, we're talking about. Coming up with some proposals for. Both regulatory and zoning changes that the planning board may want to consider relative to some of this work. And I think it kind of dovetails with some of the conversations you've had over recent years about. Land disturbance and tree protection and things like that, so. Josh, please take it away and, and be, be very, very brief.
I'll do my best, Tim, thank you very much. So one of the first things that, that Mira and I started working on was a program that is. A federally funded Department of Energy consulting project that is called Soul Smart. This sort of designates communities as being solar friendly and helps advise municipalities on how they can best support. Rooftop and ground mounted solar in their communities. Part of that involved a solar permitting checklist that is now live on the Inspection Services webpage, many thanks to. Joe Prandak, who's also on the call, so we appreciate his help. And it also involved a comprehensive zoning review by our consultants. They provided a sort of read through of our zoning code and identified opportunities for us to potentially build in. A solar friendly language and potential sort of zoning changes to make Milton greener on that front, which, which Tim has been reviewing. Secondly, as was reported in the Times today, the, the town has been involved in the Building Electrification Accelerator. Program led by the folks in Brookline and an organization called Mothers Out Front. That was originally led by the 10 communities who are participating in the. Fossil free development pilot project as part of the state's climate bill. We are not in a position to participate in that pilot program because of our affordable housing stock and a variety of other sort of staff factors. But we are keeping our sort of finger on the pulse on how to best promote building decarbonization and green development. On that front, Mira Patel has been working, as, as she spoke about in, in one of our last meetings on. Some low impact development studies and some opportunities in zoning to promote low impact development and greenification. And finally, we have been working with the folks over at Sustainable Milton as well as students who are part of Milton High's Earth Club. On the town meeting, Warren article, they presented on Tuesday to the select board. Upon the creation of a committee to help develop a climate action plan. As it stands now, we are just meeting as engineering, planning and sustainable Milton to see what we can do. Pre-committee to, to best position ourselves for climate action planning efforts, whether they're done. Through Sustainable Milton or through a consultant, so we, we will keep you involved and informed on that front. Finally, finally, we are applying for a grant to, to do a feasibility study for a microgrid pilot with the folks at Winter Valley. In town hall, so we'll, we'll see about that as a potential innovative sort of district energy project. Thank you.
That's great, Josh, thank you. And Cheryl, you have your hand up?
Yes, love that, Josh, thank you. I wanted to add the timeline on the potential zoning initiatives that are coming out of that work. Are you targeting annual town meeting or if you? And, and then Meredith, or is that going to get put into our list of zoning that we've talked about wanting and needing to work on? Or initiatives that we're planning to work on? And just since I'm talking about that list, do you have a sense of when we're going to distribute that list and when we're going to have it on an agenda? Could that be an agenda item on the 13th if you don't have a lot of items on that agenda?
So I did listen to the, the select board meeting where it was being presented. It sounds like before they go to town meeting, they really want Sustainable Milton to have sort of, be able to be prepared to answer all the questions. So I think it sounded, and Josh, you could maybe correct me, but it did not sound like it. Definitely would not be going to the fall town meeting, but I'm not sure, annual town meeting, I'm not sure what your timeline is with that.
I would, I would say, I, I want to, I, I want to make sure that we kind of do this the right way. And so I'm probably thinking, you know, this is maybe a year long process where we kind of tee up some, some, some language for the planning board. You know, just so that there's plenty of time to sort of think about it and talk about it and kind of socialize these ideas. So I, I don't, I don't want to sit here, you know, and, and it could be, it could be a situation where we have, you know, a, 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 a bundle of kind of regulation changes. And a bundle of zoning changes and, you know, so there may be, you know, different timelines for those based on, on the schedules, but. I don't want to, I want to be ambitious and, but, but also not necessarily as ambitious with the schedule because I know how the things go.
I guess what my suggestion would be also is if we have. Initiatives, if, if there were a list of initiatives that the planning department's working on. That might be separate from the board, but that will be coming through the board to get to town meeting. It would be good to understand what those are and what the timelines are in conjunction with what we've talked about before in terms of our priorities, so. It's, there's a lot of different things happening and, you know, it, it would be helpful to prioritize, at least for each of us, what we think the priorities. Should be, you know, now that our tenure and our terms is three years. You know, now that our tenure and our terms is three years rather than five, three years goes by quickly. So if anybody has something in particular they really want to focus on, you know, these, they meet these months and go by quickly. And we have two opportunities a year to, to get zoning to town meeting. So I'm just going to do that plug again.
Yeah.
Cheryl, just in to answer the second part of your question, the, I, the, the, sort of the list that I, you know, the, and, and this is a very open list, but it is, it's in our August 25th in the minutes documented there, all the items that we had sort of listed. So I didn't send out anything because it was already in there. But, and some of the things that we're already, you know, that we're moving forward with the RFP that we've done for the East Milton overlay zoning, we're already checking off many of these boxes.
Yeah, just to get self-aware, sorry to interrupt you there. In the past, we have like a spreadsheet that we just would review periodically and track progress. I think it's just having a master document that kind of tracks progress. I, I think it's helpful. And so I, I would ask that whether you or Josh or Tim can generate a list. There's probably one that's in the file somewhere that we've had that could just be updated. I think that on that list are probably articles, zoning articles that were sent back to the Planning Board for further study from town meeting that haven't been picked back up.
Yep.
And so it would be useful for us to look at those as well. Because I always have thought that we shouldn't, when town meeting sends articles back to the Planning Board, we shouldn't think of that as going to a graveyard of zoning articles, but rather to a place that will get some attention. So I.
I completely agree with that. Yep. And those are all items that I do plan to have on our, on our agendas in the next few weeks and months, you know, upcoming. But certainly I, I think that would be something, Tim, I don't know if you and Josh, with some of the things that we've been discussing, and I think we can do that offline and sort of go through. And we can have a discussion on prioritizing. I think that's great. Thank you. And Maggie, you had your hand up?
Yeah. So I just want to say thanks for providing all that information. I too watched the Selectman's meeting the other night, and it was a great report with lots of valuable information. But one thing that I saw missing in the report was a plan to protect and preserve our trees and our open and green spaces. I know we all support renewable energy initiatives, but sometimes there have been unintended consequences with the clear cutting of open land. And so we're just losing a lot of open land. And I just want to make sure that we're, that it's on our list that trees and open space and green spaces, undeveloped land are just as important as renewable energy. And I'm not sure if you're all aware, but the United Nations has declared that the years between 2021 through 2030 is the decade of ecosystem restoration. And so basically, this has been a rallying call for the protection and revival of ecosystems all around the world for the benefit of people and nature. And it aims to halt the degradation of ecosystems and restore them to achieve global goals. And only with healthy ecosystems can we enhance people's livelihoods, counteract climate change and stop the collapse of biodiversity. The U N, the U N has identified this time period as the last chance to prevent catastrophic climate change. And it's easier to prevent degradation than it is to restore. So I just would like to see that a plan for preservation of open spaces in there. You know, unfortunately, we are going through a period of time now where there's an initiative to take land out of conservation and, and put it, and use it for a building. So once we give land away, we can never get it back. So I'd just like to see a plan to preserve some spaces. Thanks.
Yeah, Maggie, 110,000%, absolutely agree. One of the, one of the, one of the tools that we're using is actually a, a tool that was developed by Mass Audubon that, well, that helps municipalities kind of evaluate their zoning and their regulations for kind of best practices for, you know, on a micro scale, low impact designs for kind of, you know, pervious surfaces and things like that, to the macro scale of exactly, we were talking about land preservation, conservation, tree preservation. So there's a lot of tools that we've been using, done that evaluation of our, of our bylaws and our regulations. And there are kind of best practices that Mass Audubon, you know, proposes. There's also model bylaws out there that we plan on, you know, availing ourselves of. So, you know, it wasn't something, you know, we talked about in the context of the kind of rather narrow conversation about Sustainable Milton's objectives. But it is something, you know, again, we started, you know, a working group on the cut and fill bylaw two years ago and kind of had a little bit of a, a hard time getting our arms around that. And I think we're doing a much better job of kind of figuring out the different regulatory solutions to that issue. So 100%, you know, we'll be taking it in that direction. Hopefully give something that the Planning Board can, can kind of chew on, you know, in, in a good way in, in that regard. So, so I think it's really, a really important point to make.
Yes, absolutely. Cheryl, you had your hands up and then Josh?
Yes, just me. This is related to what Maggie said about trees and open space. And it's a little bit off the exact topic that Josh raised here. But if there's still opportunity to get, get comments to the state on the MBTA communities, and if there's any opportunity to give them any feedback on the guidelines on the 40B, you know, the, the, there are initiatives that are at odds with one another. You know, because like the Canton Ave 40B is losing, you know, six acres of tree cover, trees that are probably, you know, 100 years old in some cases. And it, it doesn't have to be that way. They can do development that doesn't require the loss of those trees. So, you know, where you, there's an initiative that I support, need for affordable housing, but we have to have that balance. So if there's any opportunity to get comments to any state agency as we're looking at these things, I'd love for that discussion about the balance to be included. Thanks.
And this is, it's very interesting that we're actually, and we don't want to diverge because this is something I wanted to put on also our, our list. And I actually was just speaking to somebody this week who told me about what Somerville has. So Josh or Tim, I don't know if you could put up Somerville's tree bylaw, but apparently it's a $1,000 fine per tree that it's taken down without permission on, on, off, you know, on public property. So they have various, various, one of the strictest apparently in the state now is Somerville's tree, tree protection plan. So I'd be curious to see what that looks like. So Josh, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to also flag that the town is, is embarking on the update to its open space and recreation plan, which, which should be a very important sort of tool directly to those concerns, Maggie, those that have certainly not been overlooked in the planning department. We, we are truly committed to protecting and preserving that open space. So I just wanted to flag that that's a, a major planning effort that we have begun on that front.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're all done. Thank you.
On staff update. Okay, great. Thank you. Then moving along, the next item is our citizens speak. And is there anyone, just want to tend you with that hand up? Win Swenson, if we would like to let him speak and join us?
Can you, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Win Swenson. I live at 65 Green Street in Milton. And tonight I was hoping that Ms. Tagayas might be able to answer some questions that I had regarding a candidate that she has backed for one of the new MPIC openings, one of the new openings on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And I actually have three questions. They're kind of related. So it may make sense for me to buzz through all three. And then Ms. Tagayas can, as she sees fit, either respond or not, as she, you know, and, and obviously her discretion. So just to set the table for the questions, Ms. Tagayas, at the September 18th MPIC meeting, you stated that you had, and these were your words, quote, "reached out," unquote, to Dmitry Pedion to see if he could, would consider applying to fill one of the newly created openings on the committee. So as I understand it, in other words, you indicated that you had solicited his application. You also stated at that meeting, and again, these are your words, that you quote, "happen to know he has real estate development experience in housing." So my first question is, do you happen to know whether his real estate development experience in housing extends beyond his pending project to develop a family property into condos? And I guess in other words, does he, does his experience include any, the completion of any housing projects? My second question is a little different, and that is, do you think it is fair and accurate, a fair and accurate characterization for you to say that you merely quote, "happen to know" that Mr. Pedion has real estate experience when you are the project architect of Mr. Pedion's development, the one that I just mentioned, that you appeared on May 31st before the Boston Planning and Development Agency to present and promote Mr. Pedion's plan for that development? And that the project is expected to be underway for more than a year? Is that a fair characterization that you just happen to know that he has real estate experience? And my last question sort of flows from that. I guess it just simply, why didn't you disclose that you have this direct financial interest in Mr. Pedion's project to either the MPIC committee members when it was considering applicants to put forward to the Select and Planning Boards? Or mention, or, or dispose it in the letter that you've just sent on behalf of MPIC to the Planning and Select? And given your direct conflict of in, conflict of interest, why didn't you recuse yourself from considering Mr. Pedion's candidacy? And in fact, putting it forward in the first place? Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Cheryl, do you, would you like to answer any questions or comment? Or anything you would like to explain? I'd like to give you that opportunity.
We don't normally have sort of rebuttal to citizens speak, but, you know, I'd be happy to address these questions when we have our joint meeting on the 27th.
Okay. Thank you. And yeah, we, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing. So we may just want to run it by the Ethics Commission just to make sure we're, we're doing everything properly. So that's great. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any issues other than what is on the agenda for this evening? I am not seeing one. Okay. With that, we can move on. And next on the agenda is old business, the discussion of zoning recodification proposal for the December special town meeting. If we could bring in Peter Mullen, I think you might already be on, Alex Whiteside, Joe Prondak and, and Sue Galvin. We can bring them into the, as panelists. I think we have. Let's see, Sue Galvin is in. All right, if you could unmute yourself, Sue Galvin and Joe Prondak and Alex and Peter, you can all unmute. And Peter, you would like to, I don't know, Tim, would you like to say anything first to sort of introduce this? And then we can introduce Peter.
Yeah, I mean, I, I actually think, you know, one of the kind of the, the impetuses for, for this kind of discussion, I think, was the correspondence that we got from the Building Commissioner and, and the town clerk, you know, regarding the, the status of the zoning recodification process. So, you know, I, I think we've got them on the call. So I think it might be appropriate for them to kind of lay out their, their position and, and kind of, you know, start the discussion that way.
Great. Okay, Peter. Would you like to speak first as the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee? I think you're still muted, Peter?
All right.
There you are.
Thank you very much. The Bylaw Review Committee was created as an outgrowth of an article presented by the Town Government Study Committee to the town meeting. Currently, we do not have a copy of our current bylaws. The bylaws in, on the town website for the zoning bylaw, it's as of May 2009. And currently, the, the town clerk, if somebody asks for the bylaws, would provide the bylaw that existed when she took over as clerk, plus copies of any amended amendments that have happened since then. The Bylaw Review Committee has been meeting recently and met last night. And we're hoping to present an article to the full town meeting that would take our existing bylaw and put it into one document rather than having the 2009 version plus all these amendments. We have engaged, the, the town has engaged with a codification company by the name of General Code. And General Code is in the process of creating a codified version of our bylaws, both the zoning bylaw and the general bylaws. And the, in order to, to do this, we need some document to compare. One of the things that will be called upon to do when we present the codification is to explain what, if any, changes have been made in the existing bylaws. So we think this, the article before the, the fall town meeting of having our existing bylaw in a single document that can be compared with the codified document is a helpful, useful step. We'd like to get the support of the, the Planning Board in, in connection with that article as well. And we're in the process of trying to, to get that document together right now. I don't know if you want me to get into more detail or people have questions or I'm not sure.
Are there, Cheryl, yes, you have your hand up?
Peter, I attended the Bylaw Review Committee meeting about two weeks ago along with Meredith. And you at that time had said that your next step was going to be reaching out to our clerk, Sue Galvin, and then seeing if a, a discussion could happen with General Code about providing that baseline document that you're referring to. So if, if you could give an update on whether that happened, I would appreciate it.
I've spoken with Sue with regard to this topic, and I'm not sure. Well, she can speak for herself with regard to whether she's a supporter of the idea of having this intermediate step. We have not met or talked with General Code. You know, what, General Code, what they did is they took a 2017 version of the town's bylaws that the Planning Board had been using. And they incorporated the amendments into it. But they also converted the document into their format. They have a very distinctive format for how they present bylaws. They have a very elaborate numbering system. And if you take their, their document and tried to compare it with our existing bylaw, you wouldn't be able to identify all the changes that had been made. So we haven't, I, I, I do want to talk with General Code, but what we're envisioning is a two-step process to, one, to get the town meeting to confirm our existing bylaw, just the text that's already been adopted by town meeting, so that we have a document that we can compare with the proposed codification. Um, so that we have a document that we can compare, um, with the proposed codification. Um, we had a, a meeting that included, uh, Kevin Freitag, this is a month or two ago. Um, and, uh, our understanding of what, uh, he told us was that we would need to be able to explain both to the town meeting and to, um, the Attorney General's Office, um, what changes had been made uh, between our existing bylaw and the codification of the bylaw.
Thank you, Peter. And Joe, you have your hand up, if you'd like to speak, please.
Uh, yeah, am I unmuted? I think I am.
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, Joe Prandak, uh, Building Commissioner, uh, Chair Hall Members of the Board, staff members, thank you for having us. Um, so I, I, I just wanted to chime in e- early. You, you know, I think that, um, Sue Galvin and I, um, may have a, have a different, uh, path that we'd like to see followed. In fact, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we do, and, uh, Sue and I have agreed that I would, um, that I would, uh, present what we're proposing, uh, to, to the board tonight. Um, and if you're ready for me to do that, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, it is the duty of the town clerk to produce for public use a certified copy of our bylaws. Meaning that the language in the public copy is exactly as it was written, approved, and adopted by town meeting. When Sue Galvin took the reins of town, at the town clerk's office, she was faced with a significant existing backlog of changes that had not been certified by the previous administration. This duty is just as crucial as certifying voting, uh, voting registration records, voting out, uh, outcomes. It's, it's not something that's, that, that can be taken lightly. Um, and given this backlog, as well as, uh, significant changes to the sunshine laws and election laws, uh, the backlog over the years continued to grow. So Sue was faced with a now daunting task in, of certifying, being able to certify the bylaws. So in, in two thousand seventeen, uh, Susan sought, um, professional assistance to help with this process, and General Code was chosen as a vendor to perform this task at a cost of nine thousand nine hundred dollars to the town. General Code has significant, significant experience in this field and is a trusted vendor in many communities across the state and the country. The proposal to authorize the town clerk was approved by town meeting and subsequently funded by the Planning Board in two thousand seventeen. The intention was to take the latest, most recent certified copy of the bylaw, the two thousand and nine version, and incorporate all of the changes to that date and throughout this process, and incorporate them into a single document that would then be legally certifiable, legally certifiable by the clerk. The only difference in the final document using General Code would be a, a system of renumbering that would be more user-friendly. The clerk at that town meeting promised the body that by the town meeting of the following year, the town of Milton would have an up-to-date certified zoning bylaw on the books. It was always presumed by town clerk and the Building Commissioner that the General Code's team of experts would be working on a two thousand and nine certified copy. In a conversation that we had, Susan and I, yesterday with General Code staff, it was revealed that in approximately March of two thousand and eighteen, they had been directed to utilize the Planning Board's unofficial copy of the bylaw study, of the, of the bylaws by the Bylaw Study Committee. Since that time, more than five years have passed after this process was approved by town meeting. The town has paid the nine, the Planning Board paid ninety-nine hundred dollars for this process. Sue Galvin, out of her budget, has subsequently paid eleven hundred dollars a year in maintenance fees for this process. And again, it's, it's five years, it's, we're in our sixth year, uh, since this was put forward by town meeting. Um, and no matter what direction we go, we're, we're at least another year or maybe even more by the time it's certified by the Attorney General. Before we have a finalized document. The committee, um, i- in all its work, has, has, has developed some seven thousand, seven thousand edits to, to make this process complete. It seems to us that the process intended by the town clerk has become extremely convoluted and has deviated from the original charge very significantly. The town, its staff, its attorneys, the general public, and other users of the bylaw deserve to have available a certified copy of this document. The Building Commissioner's office, my office, is by far the most frequent user of the zoning bylaw. This, this office makes legal determinations on a daily basis, uh, based on the language of the bylaw. It is inappropriate for us to use an unofficial copy, and we do not. Not having a certified copy of the bylaw is not only unfair to the entire town, it costs valuable time and resources, which substantially reduces the town's efficiency in maintaining its budget. More simply put, this ineffi- inefficiency costs money the town does not have. I'd like to read for you briefly, uh, it, it's very short, um, what was voted by town meeting uh, in two thousand seventeen. The town voted to authorize the town clerk to make up-to-date, accurately indexed, print and digital copies of the town's general bylaws conveniently available to the public. To separately format and index chapter ten, to separately format and index chapter ten numbers of zoning bylaws, and make up-to-date, accurately indexed, print and digital copies of the town zoning bylaws conveniently available to the public. To properly incorporate and index future amendments to the bylaws in up-to-date print and digital copies of the general bylaw and the zoning bylaws, which shall be conveniently available to the public. So, and then, so what happened subsequent to that? Because the Planning Board funded this project initially, then Town Administrator Mike Dennehy, um, set up a process by which Sue would collaborate with the Bylaw Study Committee, uh, to get this process done. But we are at a point now where, uh, five years has passed, we're looking at six or seven years before the process can even possibly become complete. Uh, so what we're really asking for, Sue and I, uh, is, uh, support from the Planning Board, uh, to, to simply allow Sue to proceed as she's authorized to under the, under the, um, uh, by town meeting, uh, to, to take the General Code, uh, proposal, uh, put that in front of the town meeting body, uh, once they do the certification and renumbering process, there'll be no changes to the language. Uh, it'll just be a, 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 a cert. They will use their staff, uh, to certify the language with all of the changes. It will be renumbered, uh, and we want to see that accepted by town meeting. The, but the bylaw, the Bylaw Committee is then free to uh, continue its work in recodification in any way it sees fit, and then further present that to town meeting. But at least, we will have a certified copy on the books after many, many years of not having one. So that's the, that's our basic presentation. Uh, Sue, if I missed anything, certainly feel free to, uh, correct me, and we're open to questions and.
Yeah, no, thank you, Joe. Um, I think what you said pretty much did sum up our, our thoughts and beliefs. So we can field any questions.
Cheryl, you have your hand up. Your question?
Yes, um, Joe, did you say through what year, um, that your expectation is of that certified code? What, through what year of amendments, I guess I should say?
The existing bylaw is certified through two thousand and nine only.
So would you be looking to go to current, to date?
Yes.
Okay, and has, follow-up then? Has General Code done incorporated amendments that were done since twenty seventeen or eighteen that we were told that it was, they had done the work, uh, through those years? Have they done the work for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, et cetera?
So i- if I could interject, so, um, what Joe and I have, um, come to understand is, General Code has been using the uncertified Planning Board's document. Um, and any subsequent true copy of test articles were incorporated into that. What I am proposing, that is uncertified. Meaning that that's the Planning Board's document, that is not something that I am certifying. What two thousand and nine has been certified, all the true copy tests have been certified. My proposal is that to, or Joe's, and my proposal, is to continue on with General Code. They will take the two thousand and nine version, upload that, incorporate all of the true copy of tests that have occurred from two thousand and nine to present. Put that in there. The changes would, their codification is different and represented different than the town of Milton has been used to. Back in two thousand and seven, that was told to the board that it would be, have a different look. But that is where I believe the starting point should be. And that is what I would hope that I could garner your support for.
Um, Alex, and then I think Rich had a hand up too.
Uh.
Anything further, if you'd come back to me, uh, Meredith?
Yes.
But let me just, I don't, uh, uh, what I'm suggest, what, what the Bylaw Review Committee is suggesting is that we have an up-to-date copy of the current zoning bylaw, uh, in place by December. Voted in December, and the way we do it is take the two thousand and nine copy and have someone type in the amendments, put it before town meeting saying, here is the two thousand and nine bylaw with the amendments included, it's the current bylaw, it's made no changes whatsoever. Uh, we want you to confirm this as the zoning bylaw. And once they do, we've got it. If we go back to General Code and give them all this stuff, General Code will have to process it. We're, we're talking about another year. We can do this in December, and it's easy, all we need is a typist. We've got the two thousand and nine copy, all we need to do is add the amendments, put it before town meeting, and we've got the up-to-date copy of the zoning. Then we can talk recodification. But let's just get the zoning that we have updated, the two thousand and nine version updated to today, and have town meeting approve it, and the town will then have an up-to-date zoning bylaw. And I can't see how anyone could disagree with that, because it's, it's, well, it seems to me like it's a really, really good idea, and I hope that, uh, I hope that after tonight, we're going to be going forward and doing just that.
So Meredith, may I comment?
Yes, and then Rich.
Okay, thank you. Um, I asked for a copy of the contract that was signed with General Code. Um, and Tim provided that. It was, um, signed, uh, by Mr. Whiteside on behalf of the Planning Board on some, on September twenty eighth, twenty seventeen. And it was witnessed by the Director of Planning and Community Development at the time, uh, Bill Clark. Um, and they set forth, um, in the, in that contract, the scope of work, um, the process by which the work would be done, and a schedule. And the schedule that they set was, um, eighteen months. Um, and they had some, uh, approximately eighteen months. Um, and so that would have given us this, um, basically, an up-to-date zoning bylaw, uh, by the end of, or before the end of twenty nineteen, uh, so more than three years ago. And when I looked at the, um, the process, I mean, it sounds like the process that I recall as, as being a member of Planning Board at the time that, uh, supported this expenditure of ninety-nine hundred dollars, um, that the clerk, uh, was looking to get this codification done. And, um, it, it's, um, it's not something in which it's come back to the Planning Board for updates, except for some, once or twice in the last five years. Um, and the thing that about it is, it says that there, that the thing that the first step, or one of the first steps that they're going to do, um, is, um, have a preliminary telephone conversation um, to, to, with the designated person to set out, uh, how they're going to do the work. And then they have an organizational analysis. Um, and in that organizational net analysis, the table of contents and the organization is the first thing that's going to be discussed. And so the, before the manuscript is even generated, that that would be something that whoever is reviewing this on behalf of the town would, would, um, approve, so that General Code can move forward. So it seems to me that this question of the, the renumbering, um, and whether that renumbering needs to be something approved by town meeting, um, is an open question in my mind, because they say that that's not something deemed, uh, requiring, um, a town meeting approval. But, you know, the other thing is, it says that the manuscript uh, would, uh, basically not include any changes other than this numbering. Um, and so from that point, it would go to town council review and legal council review. So my first question is, has it been five years? And the first that town council reviewed it was within the last six months? And secondly, does that initial manuscript exist? And if it does, why can't that be the document that we move forward with? And I believe that's the document that Sue Galvin and Joe Prandak are suggesting we move for, forward with, and it was called the manuscript. So can anyone address those questions or comments from that contract?
I can.
Alex, yes, go ahead, please.
The, uh, you're undoubtedly right, we, we actually have a recodification document that's ready to go. It, it, uh, does reformat things and makes some, some non-substantive changes, but General Code, uh, reorganized it. It isn't just what's there, they, they added language, they, uh, uh, modified language, they, uh, uh, they reorganized it. And their current draft only is current through February of twenty nineteen. So, uh, if we want General Code to do the job, they're going to have to redo the manuscript. And maybe they can do it with what they've got, but the current manuscript is not simply the zoning with new numbers, there are, uh, reformatting, there are new headings. And you say, well, headings aren't substantive, but there's nothing in the bylaw that says that, and so that may be a substantive change. I mean, we, there's plenty to talk about in the reformatting. We have a reformatted bylaw that is up to date. But in order to get it passed, we have to explain to town meeting how it differs from the current bylaw. And in order to do that, we need a current bylaw. And we can talk reformatting, but we really shouldn't be talking, I, I think we really need the current bylaw updated before we do that. And the earliest we could do a reformatting, um, bylaw would be May, and so there'd be a lot of time to be able to discuss all these things.
Well, I guess my, um, my question is, it seems as if everyone agrees that we need the baseline code, and that any changes would have to come through a different process. So the question becomes, what's the best way to get the baseline code? And you're suggesting that we pay someone to type it all up from the twenty, two thousand and nine version, whereas we've already paid General Code to incorporate this into an electronic version that can be the basis- to incorporate this into an electronic version that can be the basis for moving forward with revisions. And the electronic version, which is the beauty to me of it is there, it's the Ecode 360. I, and that's a searchable online code. And we want that. We don't want just something that's typed up and in a word format of some sort, because that's, that's not going to give us what we've contracted with and what I think our expectations were. And so it seems to me that I thought that what was going to happen after the last bylaw review committee meeting was that someone was going to find out if general code could provide us with that baseline document, which in the contract I see now is called manuscript. As our, and then if it's only up to date through 2019, then they would need to make it amended through 2021 or 2022, whenever those amendments are. But if, you know, why would we start over again, I guess is my question. So I, I just don't understand that. And maybe Sue Galvin, who seems to be the follow-up person with general code, if you could comment on any of what I've just said, Sue, please?
Yeah, so certainly, and thank you. I have had a conversation with general code most recently, and it would take about eight to 12 weeks to, basically, they're going to have to start from square one with the, with the general code, with the zoning bylaws, because they were using the unofficial planning board copy. So they would start with the 2009 and continue to incorporate up until our current bylaws. And accordingly, eight to 12 weeks, they, they believe they could do it. I think where there was a holdup was at the, at the, and my titling might not be correct as to what general code used, but there's organizational chart. So once they incorporate everything, they send it back to the town for review and input. And I think that's where everything stalled. Because some, some people were dissatisfied with the format. And so opened up further conversations and everything. And that's, I think, when, and a valiant effort by Alex to, to, to end the general bylaw, to, to make it so that it would be as similar as possible for our residents and viewers. And so, but that, of course, takes a lot of time. So you know,
Things, I guess, I'm just going to comment on that aspect of it. It's like going, when you say make it as similar, are you talking to formatting? Are you talking?
I don't want to put words into Alex's mouth or the general bylaw, but I believe they wanted the, the look in the formatting to be as similar to what we had been used to. Am I correct in that, Alex? At least that was my interpretation.
We wanted it to be user-friendly for people who had a hard copy. Because it was, it was all, the, the numbering, for instance, we've got 14 titles, but they start with, they, they have all the same initial numbers. And I suggested that we should change that each title should have a number so people would know what title we're talking about. And all those, those changes have been run by general code. They said, yes, we can do that. And they're all in the recodified proposal, the revised recodified proposal, which is ready to go. But it has to, the changes have to be explained to town meeting. But the general code has made changes to the bylaw. They've reformatted it, and they've changed the ordering of provisions. And they've added headings, and it isn't the same thing. But Sue is right. If they start over again and type it up, they can come up with a new document for us to proofread and you, you know, work with, and we can throw away what we've done, and we can say that recodified proposal that we have, we'll just put it in the trash can and do it again.
Well, Alex, I thought-
What you're asking general code to do is what we could ask a typist to do in a couple of days and have it ready for town meeting to adopt. We could have an up-to-date zoning bylaw by town meeting. It may not be a recodified bylaw, but I mean,
This was to get recodification. That's what the planning board approved. That's what town meeting-
I understand that, but to recodify something, you have to have the document you're recodifying. And that's the 2009 bylaw with all the amendments stapled to it. And amendments, it really is impossible. I think Joe made that point. It's, it's a disgrace what we've done.
Well, I, I just wanted to say that I, that our clerk and our building commissioner are the, um, the people responsible for this zoning bylaw are certifying it and for enforcing it. And this has, as they said, been in process for five years. I respect that they're coming to us and asking for us to move forward with the process using general code. And I would support them in their recommendation to us. I think this has been really confusing. I've spent a lot of time trying to understand it. I've offered on behalf of the board to get more involved with this, because I think it's really important. I know as, over the years that I've been on this board and try, and using the zoning code, it's, it has a lot of issues with it in, in terms of how it's organized. There's information in one place that is contradicted in another place, and it's very, it's not very user-friendly. And I've been using zoning codes my entire career, which has been for over 30 years. Most communities that my day job takes me to work in, they're all electronic and they all are searchable and they're user-friendly. And I think it's past time for us to move forward with the next step of getting getting this recodified, getting this all up to date and getting it online.
Rich, you had your, you've had your hand up, and then Joe and Sue too.
I, I think I have a few questions. Thanks. So I apologize, but so if anybody I'd imagine that's watching from town meeting that hasn't been following this, it have to be confused because I'm still confused. At like, so one of the things I'd like, at, at some point, Tim, maybe you can help with is, or somebody on the call, like a little bit of a timeline here, like, because it almost sounds, Susan, I, one of the first things I was going to say is, thank you, because I think I, I understood something that you said was, it almost sounded like, and so if I'm putting words in your mouth, please tell me quickly, but it sounded like maybe we gave, they were working off the wrong document, and that's why. Okay, so if that's what happened, I mean, again, that made a lot of sense to me. Now I understand the predicament that we're in. Because there's, you know, it's been a lot of years since this has been going on. I don't know this, like, how to do this stuff. So, you know, any volunteer in my book that spends a lot of time doing this stuff is, it's, it's a lot of work. My only recommendation is, and, and I don't know, maybe this is what we did, right? We paid somebody to do it. But I don't know. I, I don't really know where we go from here. I'm just confused of what, what everyone on the call is asking for us to do here. I feel like we've got a couple asked, and it's not for us to vote on, for, only for support, I would imagine. Do I think I'm right with that, Tim? You can correct me if I'm wrong. But I would imagine we're just looking for support for a town meeting. And obviously, folks are supposed to come and tell us how they're, you know, how this is going. I haven't heard about this. I've been, this is my, you know, fifth year. I haven't heard much about it. So again, new to me a little bit. I've been reading the things that have been sent. But I got to be honest with you, if folks are watching, they're going to go to town meeting, they have to be confused. And so it probably behooves us to give a little bit more context, a little bit more timeline. You know, because we're jumping right to, here's the fix. I honestly don't know how to fix it until I really understand where we went wrong and what really was asked for.
The pictures of the meeting.
I'm sorry? No, sorry. I heard something. So yeah, I, I, I just, it would be helpful, I would imagine, if I'm, again, if I'm confused, I'm sure others are.
So I would be more than happy to try, and anybody can interject their two cents of trying to give a little explanation, Rich. So back in 2017,
You want me to raise your hand?
Yes.
Your name is this.
I had a meeting with the planning board to discuss, let me back it up. Since I had taken office, I had met with the Warren Committee to try to garner support to address our zone, our bylaws, not just the zoning, general bylaws, and put them into a codified record. We didn't have the funds, so hence, our records continued to, to expand. In 2017, I went to the planning board and discussed the condition of our zoning bylaws. Told them the dilemma that I had, told them a solution that I had been trying to use, which was general code. Planning board was very, it was well-received by the planning board. And we decided that because I didn't have the funds, they would support that endeavor. In October of that year, we had a special town meeting. At that town meeting, town meeting authorized myself or the town clerk to just get the exact wording to make up-to-date, accurately indexed print and digital cops, copies of the general bylaws conveniently appear available to the public.
Sorry to interject, but do we know how, how much did that cost, the planning board or the town?
Yeah, $9,900.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that was the amount that the town or the planning board agreed. And that encompassed both the zoning and the general bylaws. It wasn't just for solely zoning. So the planning board was taking that money out of their budget and, and assisting my, my department. The proposal set forth by general code, which I still believe is a good proposal and wholeheartedly support, was to take the 2009 official certified copy, upload it into their software, to take all the true copy attested articles for, and upload that into its software. They have a rigorous programming and editors and staff that compare the documents so that every word, including misspellings, are accurately reflected in that document. The difference is the numbering system. We, we decided that that would be the route that we would go. I had every confidence at that moment when I stood up at town meeting and said that within a year, we would have at least the zoning bylaws codified. It is very upsetting to me that here we are, five years, and I have egg on my face. To, and what's further frustrating is that I've let down our building inspector, yourselves, our residents, and any person who was looking to look at our zoning bylaws. Now, I don't think it's a simple fix, but I think we need a starting point. And I don't want to go backwards to go forward. And what I would like to propose and what I am authorized to do, I'm looking for a buy-in. But ultimately, this rests on my shoulders. So I'm not asking for, well, I, I, I'm asking for your support. And what I would like to do is have gen, take the eight to 12 weeks and do it, do it the, the, the way that we all intended for it to happen. Or at least I intended and portrayed to all the stakeholders here. And that is, take our 2009, have general code uploading. Take all the current articles that town meeting has approved, word for word, mistake if there are any of typos, all uploaded. What general code will then do is provide that to us. They'll give us information that at this point, I don't think we should do, because I think that I want town meeting to have word-for-word document in front of them. Yes, the numbering is going to be different, but that, and then have the general bylaw, the planning board, take that document and make it into whatever vision that they believe it should be. But that, to me, is the starting point. I feel like if we take the position, and I mean no offense, because honestly, the, the bylaw review committee and Alex have done tremendous work. And this is no, and no disrespect to, to the work that, that they, they are producing. It is more of a threshold of, I want town meeting to know that nothing has been altered. And to me, that is the only way to show to them that it hasn't been altered. We have somebody who types it. I cannot certify that. If town meeting wants to certify it and say, you know, it's a go, that, that, then, okay. But I'm not going to certify that everything is accurate, because that is a job that is-
Yeah, I appreciate this, Susan. This is, that was really good information for me. And the only last question I'd had, it's probably just a guess from somebody that, or it's two-part. I'd imagine at some point, the, the bylaw review committee was asked to review that that was some, at some point. And then at some point, they probably had to change the charter of that committee, because on the website, it still says that the zoning bylaws excluded from their scope. When was all that? Is that like at the same time?
That was in 2019.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
And Peter, I, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something else? And, and to Joe?
I feel somewhat blindsided tonight. I was unaware of Susan and Joe's letter, or I think there's been a fair amount of miscommunication. I think everybody wants to end up with a codification of the town's bylaws that'll be electronically available. I certainly acknowledge that we've taken a lot longer than we had ever planned on. There's been a lot of reasons for that, but I don't think I need to get into those now. I think what we're trying to do is get this done as quickly as possible. We had come up with a plan for a, a two-step process. You know, the first step would be to create just a word document that would have the entire zoning bylaw. The reason we were proposing that was that in our meeting with Kevin Freitag, he left us with the impression that in order to present this to town meeting and in order to present it to the attorney general's office if it was passed, we would need to be able to specify all the changes that had been made from the existing bylaw to the new document. We don't have anything that we can compare it with or use any of these software packages that'll, that'll track changes for you. Because we don't, we don't have the whole document in, in one, the whole bylaw in one document. You know, we anticipated going to the codification in, in the spring town meeting. We anticipated going to the codification um in, in the spring town meeting. Um. It's clear that, it's clear to me at least that um there isn't a consensus right now. I believe that we need to have everybody in the same room with regard to this. It's been somewhat confusing in the sense that. Um. We, we were asked to review uh general codes um original proposal. Um, but Sue has been the person that's had the most contact with general code and has been dealing with general code the most. Um, I mean, I think uh from what I hear tonight, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to have anything ready for. Um, this uh special town meeting in December. Um, and I think the, the best we can hope for is to have uh something to present to the annual town meeting next spring. Um, and I think, you know, we're going to all need to work together. Um, you know, I think uh Susan and, and Joe, um, I'd like to have, you know, incorporate you into this process. Um, and um, I think there should be at least somebody from the planning board as part of the process. Um, so that we're all on the same page and we all know the same things.
Thank you, Peter. Um, and Joe, you had your hand up? Please. Uh, you're on mute. There you are.
Yeah, so, so a couple of comments. I think that um uh some of the confusion uh is coming between the words um codification and certification. Uh, if we move forward with the proposal to um, to uh. Uh, take the, the two thousand nine bylaw as it is, have a typist type something up, present that to town meeting and have them accept that as our zoning bylaw. And if that passes, Sue Galvin is still stuck with the chore of certifying that language. She would then have to hire general code or some other company to go and help her certify all of that.
No, no, she would just be certifying what they, they voted right now.
No, that is not certification. That is not the duty of town clerk. That, that's not how, how it works. She would, she would have to certify every word and Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's. That's how, how it is.
So. So I, I, I do want to say that um. It would be um that if ti, if that article was presented to town meeting. As um suggested, that I would certify and have to certify that the document. That that is what town meeting voted to accept. Now, that doesn't mean that that document truly reflects what has happened, but that I would have to accept. And then that would be the um zoning bylaws.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Understood, but the other, the other comment that Cheryl makes um is that this would be an electronic con, copy, a searchable copy. And by using the services of general code uh for a year, for an annual fee, um, they would help with the continuation of certifying the. Um. Uh, any subsequent changes to the bylaw so that we didn't end up in this situation again. Um, and um, I can, uh, as, again, as the most frequent user of the zoning bylaw. Uh, I can tell you that it is, general code proposal is absolutely user-friendly. Uh, there is a lot of work that needs to be done on the existing bylaw. Um. I, I've, I've actually been saying that for years. Um, and um. I, I, I'm, I, I'm certainly willing to um sit with some people and, and, and go through that part of it. Um. A, a, again, the usually, i- 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 if you're, if you're going to recodify the bylaw, but you're not looking at um the uses of the bylaw and how it's being used. Then you, you, you're not really doing a complete process. So again, in the, in the, in the, in what passed town meeting, the, the clause that says to separately format in index chapter ten. That mean, and Sue Galvin is authorized to do this. She's authorized to go straight to general code and say, give me that document and put it before town meeting. I think what, what Sue and I are proposing here is we're looking for uh the planning board's support in that effort. And that's all.
Thank you so much, Joe. That's good. Um, Tim, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to jump on. I just wanted to could kind of get in and, and maybe I think clarify what, what my understanding of the sort of quick certification question is for, for. The difference between Sue being able to certify the input into town meeting. It is sort of a question of the scope of what town meeting is actually considering. So if Sue can say this language has been certified because town meeting passed this amendment in twenty seventeen and I certified it back then, it's the same language. Means that the only thing the town meeting is considering is any type of heading change or, or, or whatever. Pursuit for, for an input to town meeting to not be certified by, by the clerk. We're effectively saying, you know. You're replacing all of chapter ten and you go, you gotta look at every word. Now granted, if, you know, if, if someone types it up. You know, the likelihood of someone changing the hundred-foot frontage to seventy-five-foot frontage is very low. But if you're not dealing with the true copy of what was passed by town meeting at the time, you're looking at every single word. And so that's why it's so important for the input into this process to be a certified true copy from the clerk. Or else you're putting everything on the table, which is, it's just an onerous process for town meeting that I don't think we should even be considering.
I was, I think I was next. Um.
Yes.
I was thinking exactly, it's very similar. Um, I, but I, I mean, I think the only part I'm a little confused on, well, I don't think I'm confused, but you can, folks can tell me if I am. Um, it sounds like if I just break this apart, Sue, I mean, you're tasked with the project. Um, the bylaw review committee is in support of that, and so aren't we? Um, I mean, I, I would like, we could talk at any point about our support for these things, but. It sounds to me like, I mean, if it's Sue, if it's your project, um, it's kind of like, I, I mean, I don't know how this works, Tim. Let me tell me if I'm wrong, everybody sounds like you're. It's your job to make sure it happens the way you want it to happen and get it to town meeting. Um, you're getting the feedback from the bylaw review committee. Maybe you'll get some more feedback from us today. Um. Personally, I'll support what you want to do. I mean, it's your project. You're the one leading it. Um.
I, I, you know, Ri- Rich, I, you know, uh, this is, this is, this is a situation where I'm, I'm pushing the paper. And I'm liaising between multiple boards and committees and officials and town hall. Um, you know, ultimately, this is going to be zoning. Um, you know, and so it's going to be an article that's going to have to go through the planning board. Um, ostensibly will be a planning board sponsored article. Um, at the very least, we'll have a, a public hearing before the planning.
But to your point, Tim, if, if somebody comes forward with a brand new. Um, we want you to, you know, approve this entire thing, town meeting. I mean, I haven't been going for TM meeting that long, but you know, in the decade that I've been doing it. I mean, we, we harp over periods in upper and lowercase, right? At hours upon end length. I can't imagine what's going to happen with this entire zoning. I will tell you, I can't vote it on in this committee unless I do my due diligence, so I'm either not going to vote or I'm going to do my due diligence. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I thi, I think, uh, you know, the, the, I, I can't, I can't really give you so much advice here except to kind of be very clear. On what your goals are for the zoning and, and to try to come to the best strategy, I think. Um, you know, I, I think everyone's kind of laid out a compelling case, but you know, it's ultimately, it's like, what do you want to do? Um, you know, do you want to have? An electronic version that can be searched and used by the public and by developers and by residents? Um, you know, do you want to have an updated version that includes everything that has been passed up until twenty twenty-two? Do you want to have something that the town clerk can in the future just insert new amendments into, in a simple, straightforward fashion? Um, you know, and the answers to those questions are going to lead you to a process and a product. Um, you know, bu- but ultimately, you know, I. It's, it's, you know. I think going back to the town meeting articles, I think going back to the original charge of, you know, of, of town meeting to produce this product. Is, is a good place to start and figure out how to get to where you need to go from there. Uh, because otherwise, you know, I'm, I'm a rule follower. And if you're, if, if you're not following, you know, the, the, the directive the town meeting gave you, then where are you going? Um, so it's, you know, I, I, I kind of, Rich, I'm taking my call, my, my orders from you and not the other way around, I think.
Great, thank you. Um, Cheryl, you had your hand up?
Um, yeah, so um, I just wanted to kind of come back to where there's some agreement on what needs to be done. Um, I think maybe the history is a little frustrating for everyone. Um, but in terms of moving forward with it, now that Tim has made it clear that the article would be a planning board sponsored article for town meeting. I do think that the planning board needs to be involved in the next steps so that when we. Uh, speak to this, to town meeting, to the Warren Committee, to the select board and so forth, that we're speaking to it from, you know, uh, being a participant. Rather than an observer. And so I, um, I would like to suggest and, and, you know, I've offered to do it, but it could be someone else. Um, you know, to work with the parties who are working on this, so uh Sue Galvin, Joe Prandak, um, Peter Mullen. Tim and, um, and, you know, really have. I, I think it's clear, everybody has the same objectives, it's, you know, it's the way to get there. I support um Sue and Joe's recommendations. Um. And I think um there's, the bigger next step really is amendments. You know, because there are things that general code identified um as being um. Maybe in conflict with state law or just, just other things that really should be looked at. And um, and, and we'll need a process for that as well, because those will be zoning amendments that need to come through the planning board too. So I do think that um planning board involvement um uh really is important at this stage.
And I do appreciate that. Um, and I think Joe, um, you know, he said if we go ahead and do this, there, there still will be a lot of work that will need to be done. Um, uh, but either way, you know, I think we're looking at, you know, eight to twelve weeks. Um. If we go with general code, you know, if we. Move forward. Um, either way, I don't see this going to uh December town meeting.
No, I don't.
Unfortunately, I think, because we want to, either way, we want to do, we want to do it the right way. Um. And I do understand the uh, the difficulty that the building department and Sue Galvin um have been um enduring, so. Uh, Joe, you did have your hand up. Is that?
Oh, uh, no, I'm sorry, that should be down.
Um, and Peter Mullen, you had your hand up? I don't know if you wanted to.
Um.
Say something further.
Who, who would you want um the bylaw review committee to reach out to with regard to going forward? I mean, I. I, I think we've been on, there's been a lot of miscommunication. Um. I- i- is there a planning board representative that Meredith, do you want us to reach out to you? Do you want us to reach out to someone else?
You know what Cheryl has offered to, to um be the liaison with um, and I think with Alex, with yourself and P, and. Um, and Sue and Joe. I, I think. I think both, um, but I'm not even sure that, you know, it sounds like, you know, what town meeting voted. We authorized Sue Galvin to move forward on this.
Yeah, I have to go back and look at that article. Um.
Yeah.
The, the, the bylaw review committee was also created by um town meeting.
Yes. Um, Maggie, did you have a question? You had your hand up?
Um, not a question, but I just um kind of wanted to reiterate a couple of things that. Um, you know, I have the utmost respect for Alex and Mr. Mullen. And they are really tru- truly two of the uh town meeting members that when they speak, I, I really listen to what they have to say. And I appreciate their efforts in, in trying, really trying to make this process as simple as possible. However, I hear the passion in Sue's voice. And I understand the responsibility that she is feeling for this. And I really appreciate her commitment to the process. So I do feel like. Um, we need to kind of support her and her efforts and help her a, as much as we can because um. You know, she doesn't really want to screw it up and, 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 and I really appreciate that. So I appreciate all your efforts, Sue.
Yeah. Certification. And Alex?
Uh. I uh. Am a little bit shell-shocked, but uh, uh, that's the nature of politics. Uh, uh. If you want to go back and have general code. Do the two thousand and nine bylaw with the amendments and, and do it exactly the way it exists. Uh, and then we can proofread it because we can't just assume that because general code is a corporation. That they've done it perfectly. I think that we have to proofread what they do and not just say, well, general code said it, it must be right. But once they get it and we're satisfied that it's exactly what's there with the amendments all up to date. We can have town meeting adopt it and that will be in a, uh. I mean, Joe says it'll be in a great form for search, but I assure you that we spent months revising it because. Their format is not in a great. Condition for search, but it would be a recodified by law and I think that would be the end of it. I don't think there would be any further push for improving the recodification. So we'd be getting stuck with a uh, a, a product that was not as good as it could be. And in fact, we have quite a good recodification ready to go uh up to date. Um, but we can't give it to town meeting without explaining the differences between what we currently have. But uh, if you want to, if you want to do it the way Joe and Sue want to do it, uh. Uh, I think that uh you're making a huge mistake, but uh, uh, you know, you know, that's just my opinion.
I agree, Alex. It definitely would need to be proofread. And I, I think we really, I think Joe is, you know, is committed to um. Correcting things that are um, that are actually in conflict with one another and, and things that um. We would need to look, look at um going forward, even with the recodification. Um, and that was a question that I had because I do believe whenever we come to town meeting, we're going to have to explain what the changes the general code made. Um, and I believe they do provide a list. Is that correct, Sue? That they provide a list of any?
They, they will, but what I'm proposing is that there be no changes.
Okay. That would be.
That it be exactly as what they have, therefore eliminating any confusion for a town meeting. And then for the committees to, that's what I'm proposing. I mean, certainly if. Um, there's other options to do, but I just think that that A would get it up fastest.
Yeah.
Um, and. At least be able to present to town meeting so that we would have that working document so that.
Yeah.
All, all you folks can then progress and, and make whatever modifications and changes to that document. That you deem as appropriate and have town meeting approve those.
Okay. Thank you. Alex, was your hand up once again, or was that?
Uh. No, I, I'm going to.
Okay.
I'm going to take my hand down.
Thank you. Um, Cheryl?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify uh something that Sue said. So I understand that they started beginning general code to put in exactly the code up to twenty nineteen. But amendments after twenty nineteen actually amend that two thousand and nine code, right? So they're going to have to go in and make those amendments if they're incorporating all of the changes. And some of it, it's a whole new section. That's easy, but other places, it's not a whole new section. It's striking words and replacing words. So I just want to be clear that there, they will be making those changes, but those are changes that you've already certified, right?
So. Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, yeah. So it's what town meeting has approved, so they've approved for that section of the bylaw to be changed.
So to be clear for, I guess, is that proofreading part is to make sure that those changes are actually made. Because where it says in that, in those amendments, you know, strike X lines and replace it with Y line. That will be done by them and somebody has to review it and make sure that it's correct, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Maggie?
Oh, yeah. And I just had a question about where in the process will we ensure that our bylaws are, reflect state statutes? Because I know that there's been changes in state statutes throughout the past few years. So I just want to make sure that I, our bylaws reflect those.
Okay, so if we go with what I'm proposing, that part, I'm not 100% sure how we would be able to reflect that. I would have to talk to town council as to, you know, how that would be interjected into our bylaws. So I, I wouldn't be able to give you a, a accurate answer at this time, but I certainly will talk to town council and get back to all of you folks.
Great, thanks.
Great. Tim, you had your hand up again? Sorry. And then Rich also.
Don't worry about it.
Rich, go ahead.
No, it was just not to harp on it, just because we used to have this issue on the planning board. And, and I know Tim got this stuff fixed when he came on, but, you know, because of our website was always wrong and outdated. But, you know, now that, you know, we had a very good meeting tonight on this, and I think a lot of information was put out there. If this is coming to another town meeting in the not so distant future, I'd imagine folks that are, town meeting members are going to start looking into this. I just, I, I don't know who would do this, but somebody should probably update the zoning bylaw review committee's website. Because it says right on here that they're not supposed to be looking at zoning bylaws, but they obviously are because they were asked to do this. So I would just, I recommend doing it because somebody's going to ask that question of why they're working on something that's excluded from their purview.
Great, Rich.
So we don't, we don't staff that committee, but I, I will find out who does. No, 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 it's, no, it's fine. I'm, I'm your guy in town hall. So we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get that fixed.
Alright.
And, and we'll figure out.
I'm not on that committee, so I'm not saying they have to do it, but I'm just, it looks weird.
Rich?
Yes?
Yes.
There was an amendment to our charter after we were created that authorized us to look at the zoning bylaw and the other three, three other bylaws that hadn't initially been part of our.
Yeah. And, and Peter, I, I recall that and I know that, but I just, that, that's why I started with, I know the planning board, we used to have outdated stuff on our website all the time. So it's not a reflection on your board. It's just, I know that sometimes things take forever to update. I was just calling it out, just, just so you never get that question.
Great, thank you. Alright, so do we have a plan to move forward here, or do we want to? Oh, Alex, you had your hand up?
My suggestion is this, if you, if you decide to put general code to work from the get-go, I'd suggest that the planning board update the planning board version of the zoning on its website by including the amendments that have been adopted since it was, it was written and posted. And it hasn't, it hasn't been updated since I left the board. And I think that it would be a good idea if the planning board, just for the planning board version, it conceitedly is something that Sue couldn't certify, but it would still be a correct statement of the bylaw. Because what's up there is a correct statement of the bylaw. And with amendments, it would be a correct updated statement of the bylaw. So I suggest that.
It suggests Cheryl? It suggests, yeah. Anyone else? Does anyone from the public would like to speak to this as well? Please feel free to raise your hand if there's anyone in attendance who would like to comment or add anything. Seeing none? Okay, so if I'm hearing everybody, we are, we are looking to support Sue in moving forward. And again, Alex and, and Peter, your work, you, you, you have done a tremendous amount of work. And we do want to see this ultimately be the document that you're envisioning. And, and we hope you will stay with us and, and, and we will all continue to work on, on making this the best, the best document possible. And user friendly for everyone. Does that sound, is that what I'm hearing from the board?
Meredith, I would just add, support Sue and Joe.
And Joe, of course, yes, of course.
Not to leave you out, Joe.
Yeah, Sue and Joe. So do we, I don't know that we need to vote on this, but if you, we would like to make it, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to support moving forward with the zoning bylaw certification in the manner which recommended and suggested by Park Sue Galvin and building commissioner Joe Prandak, with the goal of having an article through the planning board for town meeting, for the annual town meeting in May. Is that, sorry, just before I finish that, Sue Galvin, Joe Prandak, was that your intent for the May town meeting? Yeah, okay. And we will, there'll be a, an ad hoc or informal group that works on this, including Sue Galvin, Joe Prandak, the bylaw review committee, and Tim Zerwinski, our town planner, and myself, representing the planning board.
Second.
Second, okay, roll call. All in, all in favor? Rich?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And thank you, everyone. This is, it's
Did we get Sean?
Oh, Sean had to step off.
Oh, did I miss that? I'm sorry. I, I had to step out for a minute.
No, that's okay. He just texted me, he had to, something was going on that he had to leave tonight, so, to take care of. So anyway, and myself, yes. And I just want to say thank you again, Alex and Peter and Sue and Joe, for all your hard work, everyone's hard work on this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, bye. So moving on to our next agenda item, and we had discussed this and I think we had all agreed, but I just wanted to make sure we had not taken a formal vote. So just so we can do this for Sue Galvin's office, we should have a formal vote on our, our committee appointments. And we had discussed as a slate Cheryl to be appointed to the MPIC committee, Rich Bueller to the, to the CPC committee, Maggie to Fair Housing, Sean to Telecom, and myself, Capital Improvement and Open Space and Recreation. So just, is that what everybody recalls that we had all had a discussion, everybody was good with those, those positions?
We already voted on those, didn't we?
You know, we, we discussed them. I don't think we ever took a formal vote. So that's why I just wanted to do a formal vote.
I'm pretty sure we did, because again, I was sworn in, I think.
I don't frankly, no, I don't see.
Okay, if you were sworn in, that's, that's
I mean, I got a letter from
It wasn't there, you just have to, I scrolled and it came up.
Okay, so you're all set.
Thanks.
Yeah, Peter, I think you're, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I just wanted to make sure, like, we're not redoing something that we didn't need to do. Because if you vote me in today, that means Sue has to redo me and then I start over.
No, alright, then you're, you're fine, you're all, you're appointed. So, so we will, we will not, you, if you're already sworn in, this is for the purpose of making sure everyone is, is sworn in. So, and, and this is, some of these are renominations for people who have already been on the boards. So, but this is just, just to make sure we're, we're all set on this. So could I have a motion to nominate Cheryl to master plan implementation? Rich, we're going to skip you. Maggie, Fair Housing, Sean, Telecom, myself to Capital Improvement and Open Space Committee. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you. It was just a little housekeeping. I just wanted to make sure all the i's were dotted and t's crossed. So, and so the next, this was sort of just a general, oh, I'm sorry, discussion vote on the Milton Village Design Guidelines. This has been a great process. You know, I think we, four weeks ago, decided we just wanted to allow as much time for public comment. I've reached out to people, I, you know, people seem very pleased with the document. I don't know that we, it was a front page article in the Milton Times. So I think it's, we've given time for, for people to know that this is happening and to be able to go online and take a look. So nothing, nothing else has come in, Tim, that you are, comments or concerns?
So, Meg, Meredith, rather, if I may, is it possible, I did review a red line, that red line version. And is it possible to screen share that, Tim? I, I wanted to scroll to a section and just ask a question.
Give me just half a minute to bring that up.
Thank you.
And while he's doing that, you know, one thing Cheryl, you had noted is this is not finally, you know, it's not written in stone. If there is something that we come across and a developer and we, you know, there's, we're working with a developer who's, has a concern, you know, it allows flexibility in this document, but we can also make amendments to it down the road if we find, you know.
Right. So the one, the one benefit of having things electronic, right, is that you don't have to reprint something. That, you know, in the days of all these things would be printed places and changing them would be a larger endeavor. But there, there were things that we spoke about at the last discussion with, with them that, you know, and they made those changes. So I'm sorry, Tim, if you could just scroll.
You know what?
Just slowly scroll through it and then there's a point, I think it's where we were attacking perhaps about the public realm and the tree grades. I just, I think there was something that needed to get fixed there in the wording. Sorry, Meg, can you just go to the public realm part, Tim, and then if that's not the section, I'll, I'll I'm sorry, I didn't write down the page.
Yeah, it's, it's like an enormous file, so it kind of like freezes up a little bit.
Yeah.
Sign guidelines.
Maybe even just as the tree guards, I think it was. Let me pull it up if I find it here.
Tree, is it tree grates is the term?
Oh, it might be grates, but I think it was a guard too, like fencing.
Yeah, it should say guard, I think. But I don't, he, that might have been in a different area though, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, those are right there, the, what's the requirements in red, right? That's the standard.
Yeah.
So then, yeah, but I think you're, okay, just scroll a little bit further down here. Okay, yeah, that might be it right there. Yeah, stop right there. Alright, so that actually can you scroll a little bit further? Right there, alright. That last sentence, tree grates may be permitted, are not recommended. You know, sometime, well, that, it just needs to be, but are not recommended, and it just needs another word, I think. But I was wondering, did we say that grates shouldn't or not?
No, we didn't say that.
Terrible, I don't remember saying that.
Yeah, I would, I would strike that last sentence. I think that
Yeah.
You know, I look at Central Avenue, tree grates are, you know.
And you know, they can be a good solution for handicaps, you know, when your sidewalk's not wide enough. Yeah, and I didn't remember that discussion, so thanks. That was the only thing that I saw that caught my attention in there.
Yeah, that, a good catch, because we, that was not discussed, so.
So that, that, this sentence right here, tree gates may be, tree grates may be permitted or not recommended, just get rid of that entirely?
Yeah. The sentence actually doesn't make sense, the way it's written, so.
Can I ask a question here? And I'm sorry, I was hoping I wasn't going to like open up a kettle of worms here, but, and I must have just missed this, what we were talking about before, but under that figure where it says tree pits can be serviced with permit, like basically the rubber, is that what folks were going for there?
Not really.
Because I did, just so you know, I think that looks terrible wherever it is. It looks awful in our town, it looks awful everywhere I see it, because it always degrades and it just looks crappy.
Well, I don't know if you saw, there was a letter to the editor, I think, in the Milton Times regarding turf fields and how they're not really the best for environmental considerations. And I'm kind of thinking because of the rubber was part of it.
Yeah.
The rubber on that, I agree with you, Rich. I mean, first of all, from an aesthetic point of view, but second of all, just from a sort of ecological point of view.
So I'm, I'm a big proponent of the ecological side, just for what it's worth. I mean, I don't, like, I appreciate your comment, but, so I'm not, I'm not going against what you're saying. I'm just, I have no opinion on the turf fields because I know nothing about them. I've never done any research, so I don't, I just want to, I just, I don't want to come out against that stuff. But I just aesthetically, these are terrible looking.
I, I think the issue here is, is in the sort of the, the top of that, you know, where it says, when space limitations require that the surface of treat pit must be used for pedestrian movements, any pavement or servicing should be permeable to air. So it, this is where you're required to have no fence and no grate because it's part of the passable right of way of the sidewalk that you use a pervious material instead of cement or asphalt, basically. So it's kind of, you know, there, there are situations where you have an open dirt pit because
Whatever happened, Tim, whatever happened to like, I mean, I know I see that in Boston, I don't know if it's the right thing to do anymore, but I'm not the architect. Like you guys have better opinions than I do, but like, I know in like, the city, you'll see metal grates over those things, some of them.
And so, and, and so that's kind of this final sentence is, you know, that's what it's about, flexible porous pavements preferred, the grates. I, I think, you know, if this, if this sentence were, were kind of edited, it would say tree, tree grates are not recommended. But it sounds like maybe you'd rather have the tree grates than
I'd rather see that than rubber, rubber surfaces. I just, I would defer to folks that know more than I about what could go there.
Well, I would say if we look at the way that's written, I agree. I'm not even sure that flexible porous pavement is preferred. I think tree grates can be nice. So, you know, should we, I think you can get rid of all of it, right?
That's what I was going to say, and, and the description underneath the photo, I think that's, you know, get rid of that description. Because I think, you know, the metal tree grates are great and pretty and historic. I just, you know, would have to make sure that they're all handicap accessible. But I don't think it necessarily has to be rubber either, but so I, I would get rid of that whole description.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, I mean, because I've definitely seen cheap looking grates. But I mean, I think it's where I saw them, I've been to the North End. Yeah, that's a good point. I, I mean, because I've definitely seen cheap looking grates, but I mean, I think it's where I saw them, I've been to the North End, and they've got some areas have some pretty nice ones, and, yeah.
I think, Maggie, to your point, what, would it be, should we just remove the words, in this case permeable rubber?
Yep, and just say tree pits can be surfaced with permeable, permeable materials, period.
Yeah, but I still think it's important to keep the while still provided accessible surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, alright, we could just take out, in this case permeable rubber.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I think take out the sentences at the end of that paragraph to the left, starting with the red words, flexible. So remove flexible porous pavement is preferred.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree. So, so underneath the picture, it's two commas, between the two commas, get rid of that.
Actually, if I'm reading that paragraph again, and we strike all of that, we're not really allowing for the grates. So if we said any pavement surfacing should, we can leave that, but then we could say tree grates may be allowable, or allowed, or something, or permitted, or something like that. And just leave it at that, so that we're both covering, we're covering both the permeable material or pavement and the, the grate.
Does that make sense?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some edits here right in this document, because I'm, I'm starting to lose track a little bit, and, and we can just save this, and so, the, when, when space limitations require that the surface of the treatment must be used for pedestrian movements, any pavement or servicing should be permeable to air and water and designed to be constructed to prevent, that's, that's all good, right? Okay, and then, we want to take this out.
Yep, all of that.
What about permeable pavement or pavers may be acceptable?
I don't think you want them in the tree guards. Yeah, I, I would probably take all of that.
And then this too?
Yeah, because I have a question about permeable pavement and pavers, because is it accurate or an inaccurate statement to say that our stormwater fee does not think that permeable pavers are actually permeable? When they do their calculations, I think that they calculate pavers as impermeable. Which I don't really understand, but that's just a side note.
Well, I still think it, what you, what we've done here is not really addressed that a tree grate's acceptable, no. Because what we're saying is, when you need this space for pedestrian movement, then you say you can, any, any pavement should be permeable, but we don't, so that's only basically kind of implying that the only solution is pavement. We're, we're not, you know, making it explicit that a true gate, tree grate may be acceptable. And so I think we should, we should make it explicit that it may be acceptable. So where, you struck it out there, just say, leave the words tree grate may be, and submit acceptable instead of permitted.
I like that.
And then underneath the photograph, strike the words, in this case permeable rubber. Well, I guess you strike the two commas as well. Yeah, that makes sense to me now.
Yeah.
Good catch, Rich.
I ju, I just tripped over one the other day. It was like peeled up, you know?
Well, the challenge with trees is the roots on the sidewalks, over time, but anyway, that's.
I think every street has that issue.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not so much an issue for the able-bodied, it is an issue for accessibility.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
And sometimes the able-bodied aren't, they're not always able every day.
Not always looking. Well, I mean, I even think of strollers, you know, things like that.
Yeah, I was.
But anyway, that's not this.
And I'm seeing Sean is back with us, just for everybody.
But otherwise, if, unless anyone else saw anything, I think they're ready to be adopted, myself.
I'm good.
You're a second to that?
Second.
Okay.
So, Meredith, fun, I make the big motion to adopt the Milton Village Design Guidelines as amended at our meeting this evening.
A second to that. Alright, roll call, on favor Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean? Sean, you're muted? Sean, if you can hear us, you're still muted? Not sure that he can unmute.
Uh, he can.
He might have stepped away for a second, for something.
Yes, I think his video feed may have turned off.
Okay. Alright, and then myself, yes? Thank you so much. Well, sorry, Sean. Couldn't reach him, so, okay. Great, thank you so much to have that accomplished, that's great. The next is the discussion of MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Law. And this is just on the agenda, just because I, you know, we're thinking about things that, you know, as we're moving forward, just really beginning the discussion, because this, this is gonna fast track very quickly, and I think we're gonna need to have some plans in place. Cheryl, were you raising your hand? So.
Sorry, when you're done, you're.
Yeah, so I just wanted, first of all, one of the things that I've sort of heard is a theme on our board, and, and Tim, I, I want you to speak, because I know the planning board has given you a directive, I mean, the select board has given you a directive to, to move forward with next steps, and I wanted you to talk about that. But part of moving forward and the time that we're gonna invest in this, I think one of the things that I'm hearing from the board, and I think what town meeting and residents in Milton are really gonna ask, is a cost benefit analysis, that we're gonna have to provide, the why. And what, not only the why, but what it means financially to our town and how we would benefit. I know Sean has asked a couple of times, and I asked, Tim, if he could just walk us through the last 10 years of grants that we've received, and, you know, whether we, our expectation is to be, you know, going forward consistent with this, you know, I think we're not ranked as one of the the most needy towns, so I, I, I don't know how that plays into it, but, Tim, if you could just talk about grants that we've received, and then maybe how we start thinking about impacts to 2,600 units of development, and, and what, what the costs that would come with that, so. Go ahead, Tim, thank you.
Meredith, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, can Cheryl, can Cheryl talk while I bring up that sheet?
Oh, sure, yes.
I just wanted, I don't think we've had a little kind of briefing on the updated guidelines from the D H C D, or did I miss that?
We, we, we came to the board, it was, I think it was like the day after the guidelines came out, and I, I gave a briefing on kind of what my understanding of the, of the kind of the, the changes between the draft guidelines and the final guidelines were. I, not, not much has changed of, of our understanding since then. The final guidelines are the final guidelines. So, I mean, we can, we, we can talk about that again. If you've got questions, happy to, happy to answer them, or take them back to the office and get answers, but that was back in August, I think it was in mid-August.
Yeah, remember when you first, you did a presentation in which you took parts of the town, and you said, this is where this would apply, and you know, this is 50 acres, or this is however many acres, and I was just wondering if you were gonna do some kind of an update that reflected the new guidelines like that? Because it can be hard for people to visualize, and I think, not that I want to get too far off course with what we've asked you to do, Meredith, but I think it's really important to understand how this, what the impact would be. I mean, we, we, we know that it's zoning that would allow something, but it's not actual production, right? And so what does that really look like? You know, does it count for areas that we already have zone multifamily, for example, you know? So, you know, it's like, we, the analysis part of it, I'd like to understand what the select board, I think I saw part of that discussion, but not all of it. What that mandate, if you, if that's what it was called, or direction, you know, that they gave, and, and maybe what, how we think the planning board fits into that sort of direction, I think would be helpful.
Thanks.
Yeah, so, just Cheryl, to that point, I, I didn't create an updated presentation, because quite frankly, the, the final guidelines don't really change anything for the town of Milton, from the draft guidelines from those perspectives, in terms of sort of the area where we're talking about, or the sort of the requirements of the percentage of a zoning district that has to be within a kind of the catchment area of, of transit. Those were, those were areas where a lot of kind of more marginal towns saw some changes. The big, you know, the, the big change in the draft guidelines and the final guidelines was the elimination of kind of the bus community category. The, the tranches of, of level of service were kind of rapid transit, bus, commuter rail, adjacent community. So if you didn't have service, but you were kind of within the catchment area of another town's service, you're kind of the lowest level of service. They eliminated that bus trench and kind of reconfigured their kind of analysis of the requirements for adjacent communities. Milton being a rapid transit community, you know, we, I don't think we were ever gonna actually get much relief. And the, the, the nature of the relief that other towns got was, you know, if you have, they, they included a calculation of, okay, you've got X amount of acreage within a half mile of transit in your town, but how much of that is actually developable? So, you know, if you've got a situation where, you know, you've got, you know, 100 acres of catchment area, but, you know, 75 of those acres are, you know, a state park. D H C D created a kind of a metric by which your requirement to have your district within the half mile was reduced. So, rather than having 50% of your district within the transfer catchment area, you only had to have 20%, and then the rest could go somewhere else in town. Again, you know, Milton didn't see relief from that, because the sort of the thresholds for the amount of developable area that would require or merit a change, we didn't meet, because understanding that a fair amount of our catchment area is in City of Boston, is in, is, is within the Bonza River and the reservation, they still felt that we had enough developable area outside of those areas, that half of your district has to be within a half mile of transit, that's kind of the maximum. You know, half your district has to be within that area, half can be somewhere else, anywhere else, in fact. So, so that was kind of the nature of the change. The other two changes that, that are significant, but kind of applied to everybody, is the affordability caps. They basically said that you can include an inclusionary component into your zoning, but it can't be more than 10% of units in a given project, at kind of
So, Tim, on that, I, I read something that said that if you already have an affordability requirement, so let's say Milton Village, that, that zoning can bump that up to 20%, I mean, the, the MBTA zoning, is that right?
Um, I don't know if, if that's exactly what it said, I just, I, I happen to know that City of Cambridge, for instance, their inclusionary zoning policy tech, citywide, is for 20%, and so I think D H C D is trying to figure out a way to allow Cambridge, which has made a calculation that this is a feasible level, to be able to make minimal changes to their zoning that they feel already works, to get in compliance. I think some of those districts that, that are kind of, would be compliant, are kind of special permit districts, that they may just tweak to be by the right, and they don't want to put towns in, in a position to kind of reduce requirements that they feel are working. But it's a, it's a, it's a town by town analysis.
Okay.
So, you know. I'm sorry.
I think before you said that three, two families and three families didn't count as multifamily, did they change that?
No, two families, two families have never counted, three families have always counted. The, the definition of multifamily, which, which is already in Chapter 48, I think, has always been three family and up.
Okay. Tim, I did have one question too, before you get into sort of financial piece of this. Have, have they provided a definition of high-speed transit? Because I'm just trying to understand how our little trolley that tinkers along, which is technically not a red line, a blue line, an orange line, that we are, that we are assuming that we are high-speed transit. Is, have they given a definition of high-speed transit? Because I think, I see that as a connector to high-speed transit, I don't see that as high-speed transit. Just like I would not say a bus line, that, a bus line would be a connector to high-speed transit, but a bus would not be high-speed transit.
So I, I don't know exactly what their, their precise definition is from a kind of, you know, descriptive way, but I mean, rapid transit is blue line, red line, green line, orange line. Matta Pan Trolley is considered to be part of the red line. I mean, the fact of the matter is, it's, it's a train on tracks on a dedicated right of way. So, you know, does it go any faster or slower than, you know, the green line, you know, through, you know, Cleveland Circle? I don't know, but that's, it's, it's rapid transit, and that's kind of, you know, that's, that's kind of it is what it is.
It, it is considered part of the red line?
Yeah.
And we have that, okay. Alright, that was one of the questions I had, and the other question, which is for the future, I just don't want to forget, is to be able to the length of our, of our trolley line, our connector to, to Ashmont, I guess what percentage of train tracks, you know, along that, that, what would be the half acre? What is the length of that, and how do we compare to other towns? I think of other towns that have a train line that literally runs the whole length of the town. We have just a little short piece, and I would be curious to know what the, you know, if you, if we draw, draw a comparison between ourselves and other Newton, for example, which has eight stops, I, it feels like we just have a very short piece of real estate to sort of deal with, and I'm just curious, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about that and, and the impact to such a significant taking of, in a short distance.
I, I, I think the functional unit here is less kind of the length of the track and more, you know, they're, they're drawing a, a half a mile around each station, and so, got four stations, that's four opportunities for people who live in that area to get to that station and then get up to Ashmont. So I mean, like, Newton is very, other, other communities, you know, have one commuter rail station here, and one commuter rail station here, and so much track in, in the middle. So I mean, we can kind of look at, I, I, I think again, the sort of the, the functional unit, and, and this is kind of the way the D H C D is kind of, you know, define, well, not define it, but, but kind of conceptualize it, is what is the developable area within a half a mile of, of all of your transit stops, which is, which is data that we can get, to kind of, you know, look at, you know, County Milton, and then kind of compare that to, you know, what is the area versus what are, what is our obligation, you know, so we can, we can take a look at that for sure.
That would be great.
Josh, can I, can I just ask if you're taking notes? Josh is a really excellent note taker, and sometimes I just pick up a pen because he's around.
Okay. Alright, Tim, and then, yeah, please feel to go ahead. All right, Tim, and then, yeah, please feel to go ahead with those numbers.
Yeah, so this is, this is a document that was provided to us by D H C D that I passed along in the past. I don't think you've had a chance to talk about it publicly. But I think, you know, when, when the board asks, you know, what is the, you know, what is the financial kind of, you know, situation here? This is a, this is a, let me see if I can just get to this too. So this is a sheet that they made of Mass Works grants in every fiscal year from, you know, 2021, which is the most recent data that they have, dating back to 2011, which is when the program was created. So, you know, what you see here, and I'm just going to kind of, you know, just call your attention, they do it in alphabetical order. So Abington is, and we're going to scroll down to, you know, eventually we're going to get to towns that have never received an award. So. I'm just trying to get down here. So, you know, this isn't actually what I was trying to find, sorry. Let me get to Milton real quick and we can just see, and then, and then we can kind of talk about how we compare to other towns, you know, within this program. And Mass Works is the main grant program that is kind of called out in the legislation. This is Milton, I deleted the M I L T, oh, unfortunately. So we've gotten, under D H C's calculation, we've technically gotten two Mass Works grants. This one in 2011 was actually, and I, I think the way they conceptualize this is, you know, Mass Works grants that have benefited geography. Because this $1.8 million was actually a D C R project to do improvements to. It wasn't the town that was kind of earheading this for projects, you know, associated with town-owned land. Although it did, you know, prove to the benefit of Milton, because that is a recreational district that's in here. But we, we didn't, we are applied for that. And then this $1 million in 2012 is a Mass Works grant that we got in association with improvements to Elliott Street and the Central Ave and Milton Village Business Districts. Number of elements to that project, you know, including the, the brickwork that's on the sidewalks. I don't know if, if the, the Adam Street Bridge was improved around that time. I don't know if this money went towards that or if it was strictly for kind of redesigning, rebuilding Elliott Street. But that was then. And, and that's it for Mass Works grants from the, about, what is it, 12-year history of the program? I don't know that we've actually submitted applications for projects in that time. So, you know, the, the one thing that I kind of want to say, and, and, you know, you know, let me see if I actually did the math up here. So I, I, I did some, some kind of, some, some, some just quick math is, you know, the average, the average word for all 351, you know, cities and towns in, in the Commonwealth is, is, you know, 2.3 million bucks, you know, is the average, you know, amount of money the towns have gotten from Mass Works. Now, that counts every town, there are a significant fraction of towns that have never gotten a Mass Works grant. And so that's why you see that average of all Mass Works recipients actually, is actually higher because there's, there's a bigger, you know, there's a bigger pie for fewer towns. Same thing with the, with the median, you know, the median for all towns is 850. The median for all Mass Works recipients is, you know, almost a million bucks, $983,000. So it just, you know, that's just a little illustration of the fact that universe of competitors for these grants is actually kind of smaller than the universe of all, of all towns in the Commonwealth. And one thing that you see, if you start to look through this, is, you know, how many recipients there are in the early days of the program? And, and how, you know, I don't want to say few, because there's still a significant amount, but the number of recipients gets lower as the program gets older. So, you know, whether that's because, you know, some towns don't have as many projects and they don't really need the help, or, you know, certain, certain towns just kind of, just don't, you know. I, I can't explain why we haven't, you know, submitted applications, but we haven't. So, you know, there, there's other towns that are kind of in that same boat. So, but that's it, you know, you've got, you know, effectively a million dollars from this program. It's, and it's of your history. And so, you know, strictly speaking from the language of the legislation, that is what is at risk, you know, is our future eligibility in this program. You know, so looking towards the future, you know, this is kind of, you know, more of a, a D P W question of, you know, how are you looking at your own kind of capital needs, you know, vis-à-vis funding? Whether it's through our own budget or through other state grant programs for Mass Works? So, so that's that, in terms of just the sort of explicit kind of what's at stake, you know, in the, in the actual language of the, of the legislation.
That's great. That's a really helpful breakdown. Any questions from the board on any of that? All right. So Tim, your next steps, if you can talk about sort of what the select board has tasked you with for, and not that this is all on you, Tim, this is our town-wide, you know.
Yeah, I can handle this part though. The, so, so because the, the deadlines for kind of final compliance, you know, before they, there start being sort of these real consequences, is, you know, we're obligated to have zoning in place that's compliant by December 31, 2023. And if we don't, then, you know, we lose, you know, we're considered to be not compliant in, in 2024 onward. But in the meantime, you know, understanding that it takes time to sort of do this stuff, and there's a lot of, you know, discussion in town and communities, and there's technical work needs to be done. There are sort of interim compliance measures that, that towns could take so that, you know, if we want to stay in the Mass Works program, you know, there are steps that we can take to maintain compliance before we pass zoning. You know, the first one was really simple. When the guidelines first came out, it's fill out an informational form, which was super easy. It took me 10 minutes to do. And brief your select board, which we did back in March. We submitted the form by the May deadline and, you know, we were off to the races to be compliant for 2023 funding. The next kind of interim compliance step is, the Commonwealth has produced a, a action plan form. And it's a really, it really is a simple form. And it really, all it asks is, you know, some, some really simple questions about what is your, I'm actually going to bring it up just so you can kind of see the extent of what this thing is. So this is, this is the template. There's an online form, but this is a PDF that just kind of shows. So it's, you know, simple inter information type stuff, so they know who you are, what your capacity, you know, requirement is. Yes, we've got, you know, so this is what it is. It's, it's just really questions with radio buttons that you answer. The list of your stations, no commuter rail, no other transit stations, that, 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 you know, my name, email, this is all really easy stuff. So, you know, then they talk about what have you, you know, what have you been doing on, on housing? You know, before this legislation came out, you know, do we have a master plan, a housing production plan to give goals? Yes, we do. This question, 21A, I would pull probably directly from the housing construction plan, which has been adopted by the town. And, and, you know, this is something that we probably want to, you know, talk to the planning board about to make sure that we're covering all the bases of all the different strategies that we've deployed. And then, you know, section three is, if, if, you know, what is your plan to compliance? Do you have a district that you think that is already compliant? You know, check this. Do you have a district that will require, you know, amendments to your zoning to become compliant? Or are you going to have to create an entirely new district? That's the, you know, that's, that's the question there. What changes, you know, are you going to have to make a new district boundaries? Uses, new dimensional regulations? And then kind of, you know, start to come up with a broad framework of, you know, where could these districts? So this is a discussion that we'll have to have at the end of the year is, you know, if we're going to do this, what are kind of the general areas that we're thinking about? And, and the thing, that my understanding of these documents is, you know, they want you to get the ball rolling on thinking about it. Ultimately, if the zoning that, you know, you come out with doesn't match the, the boundaries on your action plan, I don't think anyone's coming after us on that. This is really to sort of just, again, start the conversation and really give towns tools to kind of frame that conversation. And then the final thing is the action plan timeline. So, you know, here are things, here are steps they recommend that you have. You know, you do public outreach, you develop the zoning. D H C is going to have a model to kind of help communities test, you know, their proposals. When are you going to have your planning board hearing? When are you going to have your town meeting? When are you going to submit to D H C D? So again, these are kind of really broad stroke, you know, what is the timeline of this kind of look like? And, and, and really, you know, what you do is get back into, you know, when a likely date for a fall town meeting is going to be. And then there, kind of figure out how long is it going to take us to, you know, do this and, and do that? And really, that's, that's the form. So there's some substantive questions there, but I think they're, they're, they're not heavy lips. And I think, again, they're really designed to start a conversation and kind of help, help towns frame, you know, the discussion of, of the zoning. So what I asked from the select board, who, you know, ultimately I refer to, is, you know, give me the go-ahead to, to kind of start populating this form. And, and they, they did, you know, with the sort of the understanding that, you know, we come back to the board with, with a draft of this, you know, that's all done for them to review. And, you know, again, you know, give the, the thumbs, upper thumbs downs on, in terms of submitting to, to D H C D. Again, because, you know, a lot of this has to do with, you know, some really, you know, significant conversations the planning board is going to have. I, I, you know, my, my intention is to, you know, before we're even talking about going to the select board, to come here to kind of talk through, you know, some of these things about, you know, where are we talking about for these districts? You know, how much community outreach are we talking about? What's the form of that going to be? What's the timeline for that going to be? So this is due, let me see. I think this is, yeah, so this is due January 31, 2023. So, you know, we're going to start drafting some answers to this and, and, you know, get back in front of you all in relatively short order, just so that, you know, again, it's something for the planning board to kind of think its teeth into and discuss. And then kind of, you know, see, you know, see where we are, so.
Thank you, that was helpful. Would, would the board like for this to be emailed out to each of you to take a look at? Or do we want to wait and sort of keep this on a, a standing agenda item and see how it progresses? Do you need to see this? Does anyone need to?
It's easy, it's easy enough to email the document out, we'll just do that.
That would be great, just as a point of reference. And if, and if residents from the community ask us about it, we can share, you know. It's probably on, online too.
Yeah, it's up there. I literally just Googled MBTA Communities Action Plan.
So there's a question is, what happens if we don't submit this? And then the other is, what happens if we submit this and then decide not to do so?
So if we, if we don't submit it, then we are considered to be non-compliant for 2023. And then ostensibly, it would be that much harder to comply, final compliance, you know, vis-à-vis actually creating the zoning. And then, you know, to answer your second question, we submit the form, we're all set in 2023. And then if we don't produce the zoning, we are non-compliant from 2024 onward until we, we actually create a compliant district.
Yeah, you, we can complete this form, but if the town decides not to, you know, go forward with zoning, we, this is not committing us to writing zoning, but that would be a next step.
Yeah, and, and, and that was, and that was the thing I tried to convey to the select board, you know, because there is, you know, there, there are substantive questions in this plan, you know, about protected locations for a district, timeline for process. But, you know, the, the question of, you know, do we support the zoning? Do we not support the zoning? There's really nothing to support yet, because we haven't gone through the process of actually, you know, what are we talking about? We talking about, you know, three units? We talking about 20 units? We talking about, you know, a big district, a small district? We haven't had those conversations yet. So I think, you know, I, I've, I've been on record as, as saying that I think this is good legislation. I think it's something that we should embrace and is positive, and we should make a good faith effort towards it. But even if, if you're on the opposite side of that, you know, this form is, is really, you know, almost as kind of perfunctory an exercise as, as you can get. So I think it just kind of, you know, and then if, if, you know, Chase Berkeley comes down the line and says, I want a couple bucks to, you know, put new sidewalks on Adam Street, we have the opportunity to, to apply for grant funding for that in, in 2023. That's, that's what we're talking about.
That's great. Rich, you had your in, Cheryl, next.
Yeah, yeah, just a comment. I, I just appreciate Tim that you're driving this, because, you know, my answer to the what happens if we don't do anything? Now, I don't know where the, where the MBTA Communities Act law is going to go and what other things they'll add to it. But we sure know, and I am a citizen, that's going to be in the shadows of, of the fact that the town has ignored affordable housing for, for decades. And so now we've got all these 40Bs in front of us. I do really appreciate that the select board and the planning department is diving into this, because the worst thing this town could do is starting, start ignoring this and whatever else happens with it, because then, you know, a decade from now, we could be in a really bad spot like we're in today. So I appreciate the, the work that's being put around it. If we decide we're not going to do something today or tomorrow, the town needs to be smart on what they're going to do about it at some point, because the reality is, they, they change laws to force you to do something. If you don't start doing something, it changes more laws to force you to do something. In the end, again, look how many 40Bs in front of us. Town can't stick their head in the sand.
Thank you, Rich. Cheryl? You muted.
I just wanted to get clarification, because I have read, I think, postings or documents put out by the Massachusetts Housing.
M H P.
Thank you, Tim. That says that they're, they're basically saying that this is law. And I don't, like, we would be out of compliance with law. That is, I don't know how that relates to being ineligible for, ineligible for grants. So I would just ask if we could get some clarification on the legal aspects? Because, and I, I know it was a little unclear in the first round when this first came out. And I don't know if, if the legislature, the governor, or D H C D has done anything to clarify that. But I just think it would be important for us and for residents to understand whether it's an actual requirement or it's something where we're for potentially foregoing funds.
That's, oh, sorry.
No, sorry, just to throw in on top of that, though, that's a little bit what I was worried about. So I appreciate you saying all that, Cheryl, because what happens if five or 10 years down the road, somebody doesn't say, hey, you know what? I'm going to build a project over here because it qualifies for the MBTA Communities Act. And you know what? The fact that you guys didn't do anything about it doesn't stop me. And then they get a project. And then that, you just never know, I guess.
So a, a, a couple things about that. You know, it, it, it's, I, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I always have to preface this with that, but, you know, I, I know, I know that in law, words have meanings. And there's a difference between may and shall. And this is, and this is a law that says that a town shall have. And so that, Cheryl, this has been a, a real secret bit of conversation, you know, among planners, among municipalities, among, you know, everyone that's involved in this. What does that mean? You know, there are consequences that are laid out in the legislation, but also, you know, how, how long is the legislature going to sit back? Or how long is the governor or the attorney general going to sit back and, and watch, you know, non-compliance with, with state law? You know, you think about, you know, the state mandates individuals in towns to do all sorts of things. And, you know, which of those? And, you know, which of those are you going to pick and choose to comply with or not comply with? But as it relates to kind of, let's say, in the guidelines, let me just like share my screen real quick. There's, you know, there's one bit in here that DHCD kind of puts in where they say, you know, under determinations of compliance, um, you know, the D C will make determinations of compliance with section three A in accordance with the guidelines. State agency decisions on which MBTA communities are eligible to receive funding from the listed funding sources. Determinations of compliance, they also conform fund decisions by executive auspices of housing and economic development with the, the secretary that's over DHCD, DHCD, the MBTA, and other state agencies which consider local housing policies when evaluating applications for discretionary grant programs or making other discretionary funding decisions. So the legislation says one, two, three grant programs are it. And DHCD is saying, you know, we've got all these other discretionary grant programs. It's up to us to determine what those guidelines for making awards are. You know, we're going to consider compliance when we make those decisions. And, and that's, you know, that's as specific as it gets in the guidelines. You know, what I'll say is that every webinar, every speech, every article I've seen about this since the final guidelines came out, um, you know, that's been, the undercurrent is, you know, there's, there's consequences for non-compliance. You know, Secretary Canely has said it, you know, a dozen times. MHP in their communications has said it. Now, what form that takes is really kind of a grab bag and, and kind of, you know, up in the air. You know, the, the situation that kind of, you know, and, and again, not being a lawyer, I don't know, you know, who has standing, you know, to do these things. But you can imagine a world in which, you know, a, a property owner goes into a non-compliant community and says, you know, I'm right next door to a T station and I'm proposing a building that has a density of fifteen units per acre. Why can't I build this? I don't know where that case goes, but, um, you know, you, you can imagine a world in which that case is made. You know, the other thing, I mentioned this at the select board, you know, we still got an election in November, but Grant Campbell is, is, is the frontrunner for attorney general. And, you know, part of her housing platform, you know, includes, you know, lines about using the, the attorney general's offices, you know, mandate to review local zoning bylaws ordinances to, you know, to, to enforce affordable housing and, and, and fair housing. You know, so what exactly that means is, is, is also up in the air. But I think to Rich's point, you know, there's, there's no putting the toothpaste back in the tube on this sort of thing. And the, what, what I said to the select board, you know, and again, you know, I, I've made my position clear, but I think it's, it's going to be a townwide debate over the next twelve months, twelve, eighteen months. And I think, you know, people are going to make their positions clear as well. But one thing that I'm almost one hundred thousand percent certain of is if it comes from the planning board, if it doesn't come from the planning board, if it doesn't come from the select board, there are at least ten people in the town of Milton that will put a citizen's petition forward. I just guarantee it. I know that there are enough people out there that believe in this sort of thing. And so my kind of pitch to you and to the select board is, you know, regardless of, of, of what your feelings are, to kind of approach it in, in a kind of a good faith way and try to get out ahead of controlling what goes into a potential zoning article. Because I think if you don't, you then become at the whim of a citizen's petition, which could be representative of what a people think, or it could be representative of what a few people think. And then we're at town, something that maybe is not, you know, as good as it could be because we didn't put the time, effort and resources into it.
Thank you, Tim. And I, I think we're almost to ten o'clock, so we should probably wrap this up soon. But I did have just one, something that if we could, if you could just provide. Because again, I think the more information that we can provide residents, the, the better off we'll be. More informed. Can you tell us how many, how many units are in our multifamily housing that are currently within this district? How many household units do we currently have? That, that are already, you know, already built? Just what are we, what, how many additional units would we be talking compared to what we already have built?
So it, it is, I, we can, we can certainly have that. There's really only a handful of buildings, so it wouldn't be heavy lift. But the, the way to understand the requirements here and what the state is asking is that you're, you're not counting physical units that already exist or, or could exist. What you're counting is what is the potential under your zoning?
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, it really kind of what matters is like, what is the zoning that's underneath a building? And, um, you know, a, a, under that kind of framework, our, our, our number is zero. Because every, every multifamily building we've built has been a special permit as opposed to a buy right, um, which would be required, you know, under this. So, but we can, you know, just as, as a point of information, you know, we can, you know, we're talking eighty war, fifty three, thirty six, seventy one, equity house. I don't think we have a ton of thirty family houses in that. There's, there's two families. We can get that number as well, just so people know, kind of, you know. Again, I've said this before, for better, for worse, all of the really good multifamily housing parcels we've developed, which is good. But now it's, it's kind of, you know, you've got to roll up your sleeves and kind of think of more creative solutions if you want to kind of continue doing that. We'll, we'll get that number for you.
Yeah. I guess I'm, yeah, I'm just thinking of how many more units would have to be zoned for? That would, that would, that would, um, really cause a building to have to be torn down and, and something new by right built to, to conform to meet that? To meet the number of units in that look, in that geographic location, if that makes sense. So just, you know, what do we have now versus how, how dense would we have to go? And that's just, you know, a ballpark, rough, rough, um, rough thinking. So.
Yeah. So I was kind of thinking along that. I was wondering if, um, Tim could kind of identify maybe the preliminary boundaries? And I think you might have done that, but so identify the preliminary boundaries of the fifty acres within that zone? And then maybe also do another one where you identify the twenty-five acres in that zone? Plus the X, the other twenty-five, like where do you think, or in your experience in the town, where would those other twenty-five acres be? And I think I understand correctly that it doesn't, those other twenty-five doesn't have to be twenty-five. It could be a minimum, as long as it's a minimum of five.
Five, yeah, exactly.
So where would you think, you know, if you broke it into smaller parcels, where would those five, five acres be? And maybe if you put that on the website so that our residents can kind of, you know, look at it and kind of start formulating opinions. And so they know kind of like how this is going to affect them. And maybe you do a couple of samples as to where the extra twenty-five are going to be. Maybe it could be a ten acre parcel, you know, and then five acre parcels somewhere. So then we kind of understand until we see it on a map, it's really hard to like wrap our heads around it. So I think that might be helpful for the residents. And then the other thing I was just wondering if it ever makes sense. And maybe this doesn't make sense at this point, but, um, is it? Or is it worth it trying to find, you know, I know you mentioned that technical assistance is out there to help towns navigate this, but is there like an independent, um, group or consultant or land counselor, whatever you want to call it, that helps towns through this? That's really not associated with any government agency, you know? So maybe that there's a consultant out there that could kind of help do like some studies, you know, help with like an economic, social, environmental consequence study of what's going to happen to this? You know, if the zoning goes through as well as like a financial, to which Meredith already said. But, um, so I don't know if it makes sense hiring somebody else outside of government.
Yeah. So, a- and, and I think, um, so, so the answer to that question is yes, absolutely. I mean, like, we're, we're going to, we're going to utilize every resource we've got. So anything that your DHCD or Mass Housing Partnership wants to put in terms of a tool, we'll, we'll find that to be useful, especially when it comes to mapping and things like that. That's kind of where a lot of that comes in. But for the actual kind of technical work of, of either drawing up zoning or evaluating impacts, you know, like I said, we've, we've got a grant application in, um, you know, we're going to absolutely want to bring in, you know, an outside consultant, um, you know, to do that work. Josh was on a meeting of, of one of our MAPC sub-region councils the other day. And we were talking with, with town of Dedham, um, who got a really early jump on kind of evaluating kind of what, what this would kind of, their implications would be. So we actually do have some kind of draft scopes for, um, for kind of impact studies and kind of visualizations, things like that. So, you know, and, and that's definitely something that, you know, if I'm, I'm real, I'm crossing my fingers on this grant. They've said that they've got a lot of money. They want to help towns. But so I, I assume we're going to get something, but if not, then, I don't know, we'll figure it out. But, you know, if, if and when we get that grant, um, you know, we'll come back to the planning board and try to develop a scope of like, you know, how do we want to spend this money? What's going to be the most bang for your buck in terms of, you know, asking for outside help for, for these issues?
Yeah. Cause my, my concern is that like the Department of Housing and Community Development and, you know, MAPC, like I kind of feel like, um, we're like feeding the mouth that's going to bite us. You know, so it's, this is their initiative. So I kind of feel like they're going to give us the advice in the direction to which they want their end result. And I kind of feel like, well, maybe there's somebody else out there who, um, you know, might, you know, just have a difference of an opinion or might determine that we have an argument for, that we're not on rapid transit. Or they, we could form an argument that we are a built-out town and we can't afford it if it, but I know we'll probably have to spend some money to show how we can't afford it and the cost on our school system and all of that. So that's, I'm a little hesitant or, you know, about teaming up with MAPC because they're the ones who are initiating this.
Yeah. And, 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 and just to be clear, it's, um, I mean, MAPC is probably going to have a role. They've, um, you know, they, they do regional planning, um, they do consulting. So they'll be available if, if towns want to consult with them. It's the Massachusetts Housing Partnership has been kind of, and, and that's a kind of another quasi governmental agency. They've been the ones that have been doing a lot of the technical work. One hundred percent understand Maggie, what you're saying. We'll, we'll almost certainly get an outside consultant to help us out. You know, one thing I will say is that, um, I think from the state's perspective, you know, what's in the legislation is what they're after, um, and, and everyone has to do it. So I, I don't know if there's much more kind of, you know, agenda pushing than kind of the force of the state law that already is there. But I think your, your point's well taken. Um, and I think, you know, people definitely look to, you know, outside, um, you know, outside help to, to do the work that we decide we need to get done.
Thank you, Tim. And Cheryl, you had your hand up?
Uh, yes, I, let's make it say, I think, um, in some ways, we're in a better position if we do the work and we are able to demonstrate we've done the work and we can make a case for why we don't think we're, we can meet this entirely. But we put our best feet forward to do something. Because I think if, if we just throw up our hands and try and fight it, I think we're going to end up being viewed by the state like we are, you know, by DHCD with respect to forty Bs. I mean, all of our, you know, efforts related to the forty Bs, I understand, you know, at the Housing Appeals Committee, you know, they don't like what Milton has done. And so they were not sympathetic to our arguments on these forty Bs. And I think that's a shame because I think we've had some good arguments, you know, with these forty Bs. And then they fell on deaf ears. So I don't, I'd rather not have us have something like that, just fall on deaf ears. They're going to say, Milton, you didn't even try. All you did was just try to fight it. And I think that's going to put us in a worse position. So I think we need to put forth a good effort at what we can do, what we think is reasonable. Not necessarily their number, but what we think we might be able to do. And the other thing I wanted to say is our GIS department is really good at mapping. I've asked Alan Bishop for different, all different kinds of mapping, and he can do it. So I think if we wanted to, you know, say, well, let's just look at X, Y, Z, whatever people begin to think about. He can map it. So we have resources, you know, in town to help with that. Like I've asked him to map where the two families are. I've asked him to map where multifamilies are. I've asked him to overlay that on with precincts. Now, there's also, and I, that's, I've just done that to understand myself. You know, not, sometimes we've asked for some mapping and, and for the Master Planning and Invitation Committee. But he's able to turn them around pretty rapidly as well. So I just wanted to make sure we're very interested that we can have an in-house resource there.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
I, 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 I think, I think just as a final thing, I think it makes sense to, I'm, I'm not going to have something every two weeks, but I think a standing item or relatively standing item on this, just so that there's an opportunity to kind of talk through things would be a good idea.
I think so too. Yeah. This was a good conversation, and I think the more we discuss it, the more questions we're going to have. And I agree with Cheryl, you know, I think whatever we do, we're going to need, it, it needs to be evidence-based and we need to, you know, we need to be able to give some, um, as much, answer as many questions for the residents as, as possible for whatever, whatever decision is made. So that's great. Okay. Thank you all. Is there anything else from anybody?
A motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor. Uh, Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And I don't think Sean is still with us, but he's muted. But Sean, you're with us? If not, motion to, I, we are adjourned. Yes, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.